was coming. And the overall view of tonight is to try to give you a little summation, if you will, of the PowerPoints. I am not a person who likes to read PowerPoints when I present. I think PowerPoint is a visual and then you just talk to the key points, give examples or et cetera. It's really, really important for people to recognize the amount of bodies that have been working on these things. We've had over forty educators, parents and students. And by educators, I mean teachers and administrators, parent professionals in some way involved with us at the steering committee level, the health and safety committee level, or the three remote levels, probably more inclusive than I think you will hear from other school systems. And at the same time, that can be very tedious because there's a lot of opinion in this situation. The decision that the school committee will be making is per what DESI is recognizing as a regulation. I think everybody knows where I stand on that. I think that this should be a statewide decision. I'm on record with, I think, everybody above me that this should be a statewide, but instead we're doing this by zip code. Once again, doing it by zip code is a continuation of haves and have-nots and differences within public education that we're not supposed to be grounded in. But I'm going to get off my little horse about that and probably speak more about it at another point. The overview for tonight is to try to give you the guidances that we've been provided. Take a look at some surveys, take a look at the models, and then take a look at areas such as services in special education and then wrap up with technology. We'll also take some Q and A at the end, trying to keep this reasonable. And at the same time, collect the Q and As via some type of communication that we'll send out to you or ask you to fill out so that the committee can have some responses prior to their potential vote tomorrow night. Expectation is that tomorrow night, there'll be more communication, if you will, and opportunity for insight. In the PowerPoint that we provided to you, which I'll go through, I don't know, Jen, if you want to put it up. The general gist is that we've been provided documents from the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, or DESI as we call it, since the beginning. These documents were provided back in March and April and May and then have since then, more recently since July 9, some more specific documents around special education, protocols for reopening, how to reopen facilities and operations, K to 12 transportation, meal service, which just came out a few weeks ago, remote learning guidelines, the guidelines for courses requiring additional safety considerations. And there's a couple of new ones just coming out late last week and beginning of this week as well. And we expect some more. Any of these have tabs that you can actually tab on and you can read the recommendations that are being requested of us. And there are more to follow before this is all done in our opinion. The models that have been provided to the district from the states since day one is that we should be planning and looking at in-person learning with safety requirements, hybrid learning and remote learning. Hybrid meaning a combination of being both in school and out of school, remote meaning you're out of school the entire time. From day one, the in-safety in-school one was an issue. It was a huge political issue. CDC released guidelines around six feet preferred. DESI came out with three feet minimum. Then that changed to three feet minimum, six feet preferred. The political game really starts for me as the superintendent that day. Because I think what happened is that you could take that argument and pretty much destroy it in any way, shape or form to many on your belief system. The other part that goes with it that's really important before I turn this over is we were provided some structure in the last two weeks about what is, what's been talked about synchronous and asynchronous learning? What is teaching and learning in these types of models? How many hours do our kids have to go to school? We now have that information on the next slide. It's eight hundred and fifty hours for elementary. It's nine hundred and thirty-five hours. And that was come back, cut back from the original nine hundred and the nine ninety because of the ten days that was provided, part of a negotiation between the Commissioner of Education and the leaders of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the American Federation of Teachers and the Boston Teachers Union. We really had no discussions at the local level about how to do that. We've just been directed that that's part of the game and that we have to provide those days prior to the first day of school, which can be no later than the sixteenth, which in general, based on, if you go with one of these models, means that we would be starting on all of the models. We would be potentially starting on the sixteenth of September instead of the eighth of September. The other part that we'll talk about a little later is some of the big key issues around technology and curriculum that we really still have plenty of work to do. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. Two other guidelines that came forward, again, I won't read them, but we are requiring attendance. And by we, I mean the state is requiring that we take daily attendance in all models that are being provided. And that we keep that information for the purposes of state reporting, which can also be, to be quite honest, used against the school system as part of the accountability system. And then the next part is grading, of which we've actually received some accolades from locals about how we did some grading at the secondary level, specifically high school. But we will be going back to the structures that we have in place. We might have to change them a little bit, but we are looking at the structures that we have at the elementary, the secondary, where we have more of letters and numbers at the secondary level and more of a standard based report card at the elementary level. These all are things that we have to still, if you will, dive into, but we have basic foundations of what they want to look like. At this time, I'm going to turn it over for just a quick review of the initial survey results, both, I think I put Jen and Karen both on that, if you want to speak to it.
You're muted, Jen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're going to go through just a few quick slides regarding the surveys that were sent to our families earlier in the summer. So one of the things that we really were interested in knowing was how families felt about returning to school this fall and how comfortable they felt with appropriate safety measures if they would be planning on sending their children back to school. So at our, once we stopped taking data, sixty-five point eight percent of our parents said yes, they do intend on sending their child back to school. Five point four percent said no, we're not able or not planning on sending our child back to school at this time. I'm going to share some of the reasons with you. But then we have almost twenty-nine percent of our families that are somewhere in the middle. They're not really sure at this time. And so we hope that tonight's presentation will give you more information about what our plans are and what some of the safety protocols are that we have in place to help you, you know, better understand what your options are and to help you make that decision. When looking at that five point four percent, excuse me, I'm just having some technical difficulties with this presentation here. Sorry, guys.
Karen, you can't listen to you. You're muted.
Yep. Jen, just go back to your tab at the top.
Yep.
The one to the right.
Yep. Thank you.
Just use your arrows.
There you go. These are some of the reasons that people felt that they could not send their child back at this time. Almost one hundred and ninety people said they felt it was still not safe. About eighty responded that they live with family members who are high risk due to medical reasons. Fifty-two responses were that their children was high risk due to their own individual medical reasons. And then the other large percentage was about forty people that talked about it was really difficult for their child to function with some of the social distancing measures that have been imposed. So for example, wearing a mask or, you know, maintaining that physical distancing. Karen. And I'm pressing the buttons and it's not going.
Okay, so we'll just keep moving on. I know that people should have theirs because it was sent to them. So as you look at, I don't know if you have it in front of you, Jen, but the different parts of the in-person, why do you not send your children to school? If you do not send your children to school in person or online, remote learning power will be provided. What supports would be needed? And so that breaks down again. There it is. I'll let you take over.
Karen was going to take this slide, so I'll let her do that.
So this was, when we look at the results here, the forty-four percent of parents saying that they don't have any need for support. We also have the thirty-two point eight percent who are looking for a device. And that has been alleviated with the fact that we're, you know, we'll be one-to-one, fully one-to-one pre-K to twelve. One of the things, the six point five percent technical support, we did find that was a concern for some parents. So we're looking to move forward with some parent training nights, both from the instructional side and also the technical side. I have my technicians who are more than willing to help families as well. We are, I was just going to comment and just say, we are working with families. And I think Jen has another survey going out. Just if there's an internet concern, you know, please reach out and let us know. And we'll do all that we can to help you with that. This will lead into the transportation conversation that will happen. Just about fifty percent of respondents said that their child will take the bus. And then another forty-two percent who said no.
Back to you, Joe.
So the return to school model really took a look at the physical space and what we would have to do. And we went with the three feet, six feet discussion. And after walking our buildings, we started to make some conclusions about what would have to happen in our classrooms, including, at the time, twenty-eight different sections of high school where we would have a problem physically with classes. And then literally students that at three feet from the middle of the back of the chair to the middle of the back of the student next room spacing only frontwards was a huge issue, especially for the elementary level. So you have the three feet apart in the next slide at the Salmon East. And you can see just at the left-hand side, you have to remember that traditionally, these are not the way our classrooms are set up at the elementary level. And this would have to be with twenty-four bodies in the room versus if you move on to the next slide, you have them at six feet apart. And you can see the significant distance that that makes as you look at the two rows in the different slides that we tried to show in each classroom. When you go to the Salmon, excuse me, to the LGN, you'll see in the next slide, you have the two different pictures of three feet apart, literally having to go all the way to one wall in many of the classrooms at the LGN in order to make it fit. Go to the next slide. Then you move down to fourteen desks at six feet apart. And we do not have any classrooms with twenty-six or twenty-eight students. So we know that that could work. And don't forget that on the right-hand side, as you're looking at the slide, all of those chairs are stacked there, need to be moved out. Part of safety protocol is that we can't just have desks standing on top of each other. They will have to be moved out and moved to open spaces within the district, or we'll have to buy our rent boxes to put them in the cubes. When we move to the Yale School, now remind yourselves that kids now are getting taller, bigger. Again, what you see here at three feet is the approximation of twenty desks into a classroom, again, having to clean out all kinds of areas. What you don't see here is that as you look at the front of the classroom, we have to have a six-foot area from the front of the classroom for the adult only in the classroom. So the adult is allowed to go into the student area if needed, but the students have to stay out of the teacher area. Again, much more space provided once you do this. And then when you go to the middle school, we actually, in that particular scenario, in the next slide, we actually put some of our administrators there. As you can see, this is exactly what is potentially going to look like. This would be three feet apart, literally any of them will stick out their finger and hands are touching each other. Again, our kids are getting taller and bigger. That was a fantastic view of the superintendent teaching the class. The three students in the front are students who usually get into trouble. So I made sure they had good seating to keep an eye on them. I'm just kidding. As you can see, now at six feet apart, you have that bigger distribution for our students. And then lastly, when you go to Norton High School, what you start to see here is, again, the division at three feet and twenty-six desks. This is a big concern. We were actually in the room for these and watched them being put together. I did. And one of the things that was concerning to me was literally now we're talking about young adults, physically much taller, bigger, so on and so forth. They're literally on top of each other. So that's when we really started to also look at what three feet would look like. Again, you have to remember that if they're in a physical setting of a regular school day, they can only be facing four the entire day in the elementary school or the entire day at the middle and the high school. That is not the way we teach. Matter of fact, we have purchased desks for the high school because the desks were not appropriate because their size were only at four feet or five feet and not six feet. And students can't be facing each other per the regulations. So it began to become a very, an easier discussion about return or no return full-time because of students having to physically sit in spaces for such a period of time. I believe we're moving on to transportation.
Okay, so we received guidance from DESI on July twenty-second, which is just about two weeks ago. The first four slides are sort of the highlights of, or the summary of the guidance that they have given to us. So they call it the core health and safety practices. So distance and capacity. We're talking about three feet of physical distance between the students. And we'll have a diagram later that shows how we're going to do that. That puts us at a maximum on our large yellow buses of twenty-three students and on our mini buses of six students. They have given us guidance that they can have siblings in the same seat. However, that does violate the three feet social distancing. So we're not going to be able to do that. And they did say that the distance requirements are going to extend it to the bus stop. All students on the bus will be required to wear masks, responsibly the parent to provide, but we will have disposable masks on the bus so we don't leave anyone out on the side of the road. There are exceptions for those students who can't wear the mask and the recommendation is a clear face shield. If there's documentation, neither can be worn, then we have to increase the social distancing for that student, the six feet, which means that that will decrease the capacity on the bus. High chain sanitizing and ventilation, students will be required to use hand sanitizer upon entry to the bus. At a minimum, we're going to be cleaning all high-touch surfaces on the bus between routes and tiers. That's, there's a number of items in here that are, been referred back to DESI, and this is one of them, to understand what the cleaning protocol is. It is recommended to keep the windows and hatches open at all times with extreme weather being the exception. Loading and seat assignments, students will be assigned a bus and seat. It will be based on the pickup and route drop-off pattern, so we can load from the rear to the front to minimize the pass-by. And loading management, which is another area that we're looking for clarification on from DESI, and that is that they're going to confirm a mask is on, that the student does use the hand sanitizer upon entering the bus. And there's a student screening, which is the piece that we're still looking for some clarification on. For Norton Public Schools, we have, we run two buses, seventy-one passenger yellow buses and the fourteen passenger minibus. That's twenty-three and six as defined by DESI as far as capacity. The next one shows, the next slide is the configuration of the bus. As you can see, it's a zigzag pattern as we seat the students, which gives you that three feet of social distancing. This is where you can see if you put a second person into any of the benches, you do violate the three feet of the seat in front and behind, which is why we can't put siblings onto the same seat. I also noticed that the seat directly behind the driver is left empty to give the social distancing for the driver, as well as the location where we can safely store materials and cleaners. The next slide is the fourteen passenger minibus. Again, we're zigzagging them down and keeping that seat behind the driver open for some cleaning supplies. Our capacities, right now, we are only tracking about five percent less in our registrations at the same time last year. We will be issuing out almost a second registration where we're really going to check with parents and ask who is going to actually be riding the bus so we can get a better count. Based on the five percent reduction, we ran with those numbers and applied them to what we had last September. And we found that there, if we run a remote model, obviously, there's no capacity issues because there's no transportation. Under the hybrid model, we think we have sufficient capacities to transport all. And part of that is going to be recommending the re-establishing of the fourth tier so that we can split the middle school and the hay. And under a full return model, we do have capacity issues. However, I don't think we're really considering that right now. Special education minibus is also have capacity reductions, but we believe that we can still maintain our level of service for the entire day for all students without a lot of disruption. Route timing is where we're going, we're running into an issue. Again, this is very unprecedented as far as this goes. We're running estimates as best we can. I spoke with H and L Bloom to find out if what their estimates might be, we're right even as far as what I anticipated and what they anticipated. So we're looking at ten minutes per route for cleaning, ten minutes per route for logistical changes. That is, we're no longer running the most efficient route possible, but maximizing the capacity on the bus. And we believe loading is going to add at least five minutes to the route. It all depends on what the screening is going to require. What this could mean, the potential impact is that the high school in the LGN, which is the first tier of the day, buses will arrive ten minutes after the start of the day. The Hay Middle School, a bus is arriving thirty minutes after the start time of the day. And at the JCS, as much as forty-five minutes or more after the start of the day. That's concerning. We are looking at this. We're running a number of different scenarios. And again, looking for clarification from DESI on some of our, on the cleaning to see what we actually are required to do. We're hoping to squeeze those down, but definitely something we are talking about. One of the things that was recommended by DESI was to reach out to parents and let them know, try to see about alternate transportation, walk to school, bike to school campaigns, parent individual drop-off, and even carpooling within fixed cohorts. We have here, the DESI has also suggested partnering with local law enforcement. What that means is we're going to do a walk to school, a bike to school campaign. We want to make sure that during the times of student delivery and when they're actually on the road, we'd see how we can get more officers out there to make sure it's a safe transition. The next slide, we're going to talk about the transportation fee. Certainly, the fee is going to have to be prorated proportionally to match what we're actually delivering. So if we're talking about, for example, running, students are being transported, your student is being transported two days a week, instead of the normal five, we certainly cannot charge three hundred and fifty dollars for that time. So that would be a proportional adjustment that we would recommend to make sure that it's within at least a fair level. We're kicking around the idea of doing a monthly fee, where you just pay it monthly, which would reduce our need to refund if we ended up going to a remote model. But again, it was, all these ideas are still on the table. We do plan to reach out to the families over the next couple of weeks to find out if they are going to be riding the bus and see what our real numbers are.
Thanks, Matt. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the hybrid learning plans. So the hybrid learning plan means that students would be attending school and they would alternate between in-person instruction and remote learning. So for us in Norton, it means that our K to twelve population will be divided into two cohorts. And for purposes of, you know, just explaining the process, we're going to call them cohorts A and B. Each cohort would consist of about approximately fifty percent of our student population. And we would, they would go back and forth between that in-person and remote learning. The goal of the cohort model is that each of the cohorts is really diverse, making sure that we're using heterogeneous grouping and that, you know, our students are, you know, well represented across both cohorts. And that the other piece is making sure that we can put families in the same cohort whenever possible in order to help, you know, our families with their scheduling. Tonight, I have a few samples for you. And I would just like to mention that these are all draft samples. Nothing that you see here in terms of scheduling is set in stone at this point. So this is an example of an elementary schedule. On Mondays, all of our elementary students would be learning remotely from home, but they would be receiving live instruction that would be directed by their classroom teacher. And the whole group would be together as a full cohort. So for example, if you are in cohort A or in your neighbor is in cohort B, both students would be in the classroom, learning from the teacher together. The reason we chose Monday instead of Wednesday, like other districts, in this model, is simply because we felt it was really important for our elementary students to be starting the week together as a team, as a community, building relationships with their peers and with their teacher. And also, it provided a really great opportunity for the classroom teacher to set the stage for the week in terms of instruction. They could reference material that was taught previously, help students clarify their understanding and make connections to the upcoming skills for that week. We will also be able to help them set the tone in terms of what their remote learning or what their in-class learning is going to look like for that week. So students would learn live with their teacher for the morning, and then they would be given assignments for the afternoon to be working independently and getting ready for their, for the rest of their week. So cohort A would attend school in person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And on Wednesdays and Fridays, they would be home remote learning. And this, so if you are looking at this from a parent perspective and your child was in cohort A on Monday, then the purple, they would be remote. Tuesday, they will be in school, Wednesday, remote, Thursday in school, and Friday, remote. And we also tried to include examples of what may take place on each of those days. So on the remote learning days, one of our goals would be that every instruction, every lesson would start with a video from their teacher, a recording, helping them to set the tone, reminding them about the skills that they had learned the previous day in the classroom, and giving them opportunities to engage with the work. We also know that it's really important for families to have a live contact with a teacher during those remote days. So we're exploring ways that we can do that. We also have a lot of great instructional platforms that we can use with our elementary students, for example, S T Math, with Gigi the Penguin. I'm sure a lot of parents are familiar with that, Reflex and Freckle. And then this just shows you the rest of the day. A few other things that we're considering for those remote days, maybe lessons around social emotional learning or PBIS that we use in our, in our schools, that may be delivered by our counselors or psychologists, looking at delivering reading and math intervention services in a live model online. And then also, we have some parameters around music and physical education that make it hard to serve students live in the classroom. So perhaps students could have those specials on these remote learning days. And in this sample that is here, there are nine hundred and seventy-five minutes of teacher-directed instruction each week. In our middle school model, it actually looks very similar. And again, I would just remind families that this is simply a draft, that no schedule has been set in stone at this point. Again, you see the fluctuating A, B remote learning schedule. I know that there are many families within our district that have older students that help get younger students off the bus, or there would be a concern that older students would need to be helping younger students with their homework or classwork on days when they are remote. And we try to keep that in mind. Again, we really like the idea of all lessons starting live or starting with a recording from the classroom teacher on those remote days. Unfortunately, it could not be live, so I apologize, I misspoke, because our teachers will be teaching the other cohort at that time. So we're looking at a lot of different ways to make sure that we're getting our students that connection. And you can see here, it very much runs similar to a typical middle school schedule where students have, you know, courses every day. And they would have that same model within a remote model in terms of getting classroom assignments from their teachers each day and having accountability to turn them in. No longer will students have the option of attending live sessions or attending class meets. They will be required to attend. And as Dr. Viata mentioned earlier, attendance will be taken whether they are in school or learning remotely. In terms of our high school schedule, we have a couple of different models that I'm going to share with you tonight. In this particular one, students see their teacher in person once a week, but then they are, you know, also able to see them through those remote days and remote lessons. These are longer class blocks, which give them about eighty to ninety minutes a day with each of their classes, which is a little bit of, you know, a longer block for labs and more, you know, hands-on experiences. We also looked at those advisory blocks that gives teachers and students the opportunity to connect and get clarification around their assignments as well. And in another model, this actually has six blocks on a day instead of the four that I shared with you earlier. So over a two-week rotation, students would have their class three times in person and twice remotely. This version actually increases the number of times they would have to pass throughout the building. So those are some of the things that we're looking at for the hybrid schedule itself. So those are some of the things that we're looking at for the hybrid schedule itself. And Karen, remote learning.
Thank you. So we obviously also created the remote learning plan. And remote learning is actually three different plans because we needed to consider, this is the remote learning for all, which would mean in case the school committee chooses a remote learning for the entire district, as well as if the governor were to, were to shut us down, everyone, all schools being home. That's what this plan is for. But there's also, as Jen said, the remote learning part of the hybrid. And then Desi does allow for parents to make a choice that they can keep their children home for a full remote experience, which is a different schedule, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So Desi guidelines, what we need to look at and consider when we look at the schedules is that they are draft. Each one of them, we were trying to develop what we thought, based on experiences in the spring. You know, I will say this again, that was an emergency teaching situation. I don't necessarily consider that a remote teaching situation. Really, if we look at what our plans are moving forward, it's very scheduled time with teachers. And while my committee was working to develop different sample schedules or potential schedules, you know, we were really trying to consider the needs of students as well as the needs of families. And, you know, we are a district that really focuses on what matters for kids. You know, kids are at the forefront of our decision-making. So, you know, we just got guidance from Desi, you know, with the reduced hours. So certainly I would expect that our district will, you know, revisit our schedules and make sure that we are meeting all of the Desi time requirements. But I will go through some of these schedules with you right now. The first one that I'd like to share is an example of a elementary schedule. Jen, I'm not sure if you can bring that up. So if you could go back one, Jen? Thank you. So this was one schedule that we had for the elementary level. And if you'll notice, every day, Monday through Friday, we have very set schedule and curriculum. This happens to be an early release schedule, which would mean every day of the week, students would have half-days and staff would have afternoons to collaborate and plan and also attend meetings and IEP meetings, planning and such. Now, the direct instruction that students would be receiving from teachers would be about 950 minutes per week in this model. Now, the next example is similar to the hybrid in which the hybrid has that one day where teachers are teaching all students remotely. In this case, we're actually teaching remotely every day. So we have one day, and it's a Wednesday, where it would be more focused on student-directed learning. So you'll notice here, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday are all full days with teachers, you know, typical for an elementary 8:25 start time and then ending, you know, later after, after two. And one of the things that you might notice as well is we are taking attendance, that's a requirement. So every morning, we felt that it was important that students see their teachers, take attendance. But on that Wednesday, it would be more of a student-directed learning day. You'll also notice in the yellow, we have office hours for teachers and it would really be a time where teachers would be able to collaborate and work together, also checking in with students, attending IEP meetings and such. On that Wednesday, there is an afternoon meeting, a student meeting with the teacher. They would start their day and end their day. But the rest of the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday would be full days with teacher-led instruction. On this particular option, it's again a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with full teacher-directed learning days. And then the Wednesday is a half-day. So in this case, teachers would have just the afternoon on Wednesdays, but this would be every week. And again, teachers would be doing direction, direct instruction, just as they would on an early release day in school with a shortened schedule. But you'll notice that the afternoon would be dedicated to working with peers and professional learning. Now, as we move on to the middle school schedule, the middle school and high school schedules, because we have older students, you know, it's, it's tricky to balance the needs of our students and the families and different obligations that students have, you know, with their siblings and perhaps working, you know, certainly our high school students. But what we tried to do is look at the set classes at the middle school and students would be issued a schedule that they would need to attend classes, just like if they were attending classes in person. One thing that some people may not know is ICE is a time when special education teachers could have to meet with their students for service delivery purposes. And that is a block of, you know, one period per day that that happens at all grade level at the middle school. So let's take a look at the sixth grade schedule. And you'll notice here that it's, it's a full schedule. You start, you know, with ELA at 8:42 and you end with ICE and it goes right until the end of the day. One of the things that we know that students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you might notice the seventh and eighth right here, actually, I will just mention that they have an extra block of world language time. So our sixth grade have one less block, so their classes are a little bit longer. So that's why you might notice the seventh and eighth grade minutes are the same, whereas the sixth grade is a little bit different. But specials was an area that we wanted to be sure that all students would have directed instruction, not just from their core subject teachers, but also their specialist teachers as well. So these would be full-day schedules. The next one we could look at is that four full days and that early release schedule. So similar to the elementary one that I had previously mentioned. And again, the sixth grade has five classes, seventh and eighth have six. And if you just move ahead to the next slide, Jen, and you can see it's very similar. This is just a sample again for sixth grade. You can see it's basically the same schedule for this particular student every day. This is a seventh grade schedule and then the eighth grade is similar, where Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday are all full teaching days. Wednesday is that half early release day. And then the high school schedule, this, you know, we, we take a look at working with high school students. And if you look at the majority of our schedules or several of our schedules, I should say, we have some time, first thing in the morning from eight to 9:30, in which we have teacher prep time, communication and collaboration. Now, one of the things that could be happening at this time, this is not a necessarily a downtime for students. This could be, you know, tech-enhanced instruction, they could be doing independent projects, certainly directed study. So even though we have 90 minutes each day here, that time could be used by students for more student-led learning. If we want to take a look, this is a nine, that was a 9:30 start with an end time, you know, typical of high school. This next one, we started a little bit earlier at nine o'clock. So instead of that 90 minutes in the morning, it's an, it's a 60-minute block. You can see on the Wednesday, one thing that you'll notice is shortened check-in time. So this is more of just a 15 minutes checking in with students, kind of open office hours. Thing about this one is we also have the ability to make this like a transition to the hybrid model or from the hybrid model to this pretty seamlessly. There would only be three class, full class meetings per week in this model, schedule B. Now, the next schedule is four full class meetings per week. What we liked about this, again, teachers are seeing students every day. We do have that middle Wednesday where it is a kind of that check-in day again, and there's built-in preparation time, both in the morning and that afternoon. Now, if we look at this type of remote learning, this is, let's say, we were back face-to-face or back in a hybrid model. Parents do have that choice based on Desi guidelines that they can choose to keep their children learning remotely. One of the things that is important here is because parents have that choice, they can decide, you know, when they would like to send their child back to school. And we would hope that we could be in close contact with families so that we can, you know, work to make that a seamless integration. You know, there, there are some challenges with coming and going, and we haven't really figured everything out quite yet, but we will be working with, with families that choose to do this parent-choice remote option. What you do need to be aware of in this case, and we can look at the, the draft schedules, we certainly will be providing a full day. You know, in this case, this kind of mirrors the high, the hybrid in the sense that it could be a half-day for students on that Monday and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, full days. Of course, what we're looking at is providing a software program so that students will be kind of moving through the program rather than having direct teacher instruction, as I, as I mentioned in the other remote model or even in the hybrid model. So this is just a sample schedule. And the potential secondary one, we would start the day where whomever the staff member would be to be assigned with the middle school or high school, they would be checking in with those students and we would be looking at 60-minute classes roughly. And again, these are just examples, but one of the things that we did want to build in, in this case, is transitioning as well, simply because, you know, using a new software program could be, could be challenging for students. This is a 45-minute classes. So depending upon the best needs of each student, we would need to try to work with families utilizing the software and the staff member who is in charge of the remote learning choice. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Cersei.
Great. We're going to talk a little bit about special education services. In particular, we received pretty stringent guidance from the Department of Education regarding how to provide some of these services and which groups of students they felt were in need of being in as much as possible in the building. So we're utilizing their guidance instead of taking us through those steps. And we'll get into that a little bit further on in the presentation. I will start with the Little Lances preschool. That is absolutely one of the, the groups that the Department of Ed has determined needs to be in a school if possible, as much as possible. So based on their guidance in looking at health and safety measures, right now, our current programming has two full-time classrooms and three half-day classrooms on the run for about two and a half hours each. We're looking at three potential models based on what, what occurs here with the vote later on from the school department. But we are either going to maintain the three-day classrooms, half-day classrooms. Hopefully at the, at the scheduled time, right now, it looks like we're able to do that in terms of transportation. But there may be a need to modify that to two hours a day from two and a half, depending on how our transportation looks, the ability to sort of clean the van between each of those sessions. And then otherwise, the other model that we are considering would be taking the half-day classrooms into making them, instead of four half-days, making them two full days every other day. But right now, I think we're leaning more to is the, the three half-day classrooms being able to come in on their four-day schedule as, as we originally had planned. And then our best classroom will maintain their current four-and-a-half-day schedule. Again, still pending some of the transportation issues that we need to work out. The next group that we are looking at is the substantially separate and some of our specialized programs. They're likely to, again, because of Desi guidance, those students that have those levels of need will be coming to school on, if we go to a hybrid model, four days a week. If we're even in remote, but it's not state mandated, we may need to bring those students in as well. In-person attendance will be, again, determined on Desi guidance, prioritizing those high needs students, either again, based on their level of need on their IEP service delivery grid or by in, in looking at specialized programming. So those are the students that we will really focus on getting in, in person as much as we can. Go to the next slide. So as I was saying, the, they, those, these students would come in for four days a week based on the hybrid or the remote district learning plan, schedule. Students will be associated with their grade-level cohort and including as, and as much of their IEP service delivery as possible in those cohorts during those in-person times. So if they go into a regular education classroom for some service, for some educational opportunities, they would do that with one of their two cohorts. So if they're assigned to cohort A, they would go in with that cohort during those days that that cohort is in the building. And then the days that that cohort is not in the building, they would return to their, their program and be with their special education staff. The, the itinerary staff services like speech and OT would work with them during those days. We would manage their schedule around the, the opportunities to be included in the regular ed classrooms per their current schedule in, in their IEP. This is just an example of sort of how it would work at the high school. As we saw around the different models that, that were shown during both hybrid and remote, they would continue to, to work around the A through G schedule, the regular schedule that they, it would be a part of. And so in this, this example, the, they go to block A, they'd be in their inclusion science class when their cohort was in that particular class and they would be doing their, their typical activities in that inclusion classroom. Then on the next day, when cohort B was in, that's not their cohort. So they would be with their special education staff in the step room, working on the remote lessons, getting their additional services from speech and language folks or ROT, PT, those kinds of folks would be working with them during those days. And then they would just go through their schedule like that every other day. They'd have their electives, they would go to their in-person classroom activities with that cohort on cohort A day, and then the next day, they'd be back working with their special education staff. And they would go right through the schedule as shown by both this slide and the next one. The related service providers, as I said, would have lots of opportunities on those, those days, those remote days, so to speak, while they're in the, in the building to provide their services and to ensure that they get what they need during that time so it doesn't interfere with the days that they're, they're in the actual, with their cohort in their classrooms.
All right. Hi. So very similar to the high school model, the middle school and the elementary schools would, would run on a similar type, similar group schedule. So group one would be the group that attends in person four days. They would attend the same, the team homeroom, specials and lunch with whatever group there's, is in person they're, they're associated with. Groups two and three would attend opposite days. So for example, group two would be the white team inclusion students and group three would be the purple team inclusion students. We want to make sure that we're dividing these children up appropriately so that we're actually following an inclusion classroom model as opposed to segregating our special education population to one group or another. So again, very similar to the high school schedule, they would be following their cohort into inclusion classrooms on those students' in-person days. And then, again, doing the related services and then staying within their sub-separate programming or homeroom classroom for the rest of their services and to work on those extra skills and those kinds of things. Next slide, Jen, sorry. So for example, Group One would attend those four days and follow the schedule. On that fifth day, they would have half-day remote learning, just like we were saying with the high school. They would have access to those therapies on any day, and they would do, their partial inclusion students for the GRIT and the LBC can attend those science and social studies classes, just like Vinnie was saying, in the high school setting. So for Group Two, when the white-team inclusion students attend opposite days, the purple-inclusion students. So the learning specialists would support the remote learning on their remote days by joining the class Zooms and offering virtual or academic supports, helping to set up the calendars and schedules for home-time management for the days that they're working from home. And again, just the opposite for the purple team. So if white-team is in on Tuesday and Thursday, then purple would be home those days, and then they'd come in on Wednesday and Friday to do their in-person sessions. Elementary would run on a similar schedule. I know that there was a question earlier in the Q and A about the hay. We included them in here as well, too, so I don't know, it was just the times that were messed up on the other one. But elementary school programming would be for the LGN, JCS, and the hay. Again, Little Lancers has their own schedule, but it would be a similar concept as as the other per-school programs. So the students that would be in Group One, again, would be those step students, best GRIT learning, the language-based classrooms. So all the students that are assigned to a specialized instruction, a special program. And again, some of those other high-needs students that we were talking about before. And a similar schedule, so they would still, even though their schedules wouldn't change as much, and there's only one classroom teacher for most of our kids, we want to make sure that we're keeping the cohorts aligned, so they would only go in-person to the classrooms on their cohort day as opposed to all four of the days. So we're trying to, again, get as much inclusion opportunity as possible, but still maintaining the cohorts with some consistency. So again, that schedule for Group One, they would attend those four days and follow the in-class schedule. On the fifth day, again, that half-day remote learning, and they would have access to therapies and other services on any day the therapists are there or that they're in person. For Groups Two and Three, those related services would be on the in-person days for the most part, as best we can. And then the learning support specialists would support their remote learning on the days when they're home by joining those classrooms. Again, offering that virtual academic support, helping them set up their calendars and schedules, things along those lines. They would still be following the remote learning plan as developed by their special education liaison for both, for all of our of our levels of students.
So again, I was going to say, in terms of students that are inclusion and other special education programs, once we have a clear understanding of what the schedule is going to look like at each of the schools, we'll be working with our individual liaisons and our therapists to build as much in-person during the, in the hybrid, as much in-person special education, specialized instruction as possible. However, we're also working with our therapists. They're all being currently trained on teletherapy, so very different model than what you saw in the spring. They'll be working specifically on those skills. We have different platforms that are designed specifically to deliver specialized instruction and therapies in a remote setting, which is, and then they'll be working with the liaison to schedule those both in-person whenever possible as well as using teletherapy based on the individual needs of the students, what kinds of services they need in whether it's appropriate or not to do that in a teletherapy setting.
And I am going to end this with just some guidance from DESI. Just a few more slides. In this case, we're looking at equitable access. So equitable access to technology hardware, which we have all of our staff members, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, administrators, who were provided laptops either prior to March when we shut down or right before. And they have had devices, so I don't worry about staff. I am a little concerned because we do have an issue with some Chromebooks that have been backordered. I know that most people are aware that this is not just a Norton issue. This is an issue, you know, around the world. And so we have received our iPad devices, which we have planned for our youngest learners. So our kindergarten, first grade, and preschool students will receive an iPad or an iPad Mini. We do have a Plan B that we are working on for our second, sixth, and ninth graders who currently don't have devices. And also, one thing that I had maybe mentioned earlier is just in regards to internet. So we have, in the past, provided wireless hotspots for students who perhaps did not have internet at home. We've been able to secure additional hotspots, and we are working with Comcast to assist families with the Internet Essentials program, which is a low-cost internet. But please know that there are certain qualifications that families must meet, be able to be eligible for that program. In terms of uniform platforms, this guidance from DESI, and believe me, Jen O'Neill and myself, we listen to families and staff. We know, especially with the littles, our youngest learners, that it's very challenging to move back and forth, you know, with different logins. So we've actually acquired some software that will allow for single sign-on, so it will be a one-time sign-on to just about every program. You know, our older students are used to using Google for signing in to programs, but, you know, we are still evaluating different tools. You know, we're currently using CSO for our youngest learners in elementary and Google Classroom primarily as our learning management system. But we are looking at perhaps trying something a little bit more robust for our high school students. And as I mentioned previously, we are looking forward to helping parents kind of navigate this with having night meetings or Zoom sessions, I should say, so that you can attend and we can help you with the technology, because it's not easy, and we know that. And just know that we are a small department. The Technology Department does work very closely with the Office of Teaching and Learning, and we're certainly more than open to receiving feedback as to what is good and what is, you know, a challenge for you. So we will work the best that we can to provide the best experience we can for our students and staff and know that you can always reach out with any technical issues or any concerns that you have regarding this new remote world that we're in. So thank you.
Before we move on to questions and answers, I just want to bring in Wade Lazada, Director of Facilities, for a quick second. Should have had him as part of my discussion. Wade, Wade and I are basically in charge of many of the protocols that will then go to our Safety Committee, which consists of our nurses, once a decision is made. Everything from signage in the buildings, checking in and checking out procedures, what needs to be in a classroom, PPEs and all of that, our HVAC system. So I wanted to just have him bring you up to date on some of the things that we already have, the things that are on order, and where we stand with some of that.
So good evening, everybody. I just will run down real quick some of the supplies that we've already have in stock and then some that we have on order. It was our job to kind of put three to four months' worth of PPE in stock. So we have over 5,000 three-ply masks in stock, 10,000 more on order, 2,000 visible masks, 2,000 more on order, children's three-ply masks, 300 on order right now. Gloves, we have over 300,000 on order. We have currently 3,000 in stock. Face shields, we have 250. We have another 300 on order. Soap, 300 in stock, 750 refills on order. Hand sanitizer, 60 gallons in stock, 620 more gallons ordered. Hand sanitizer stands, we'll have them throughout the school. We just ordered 20 new ones, and we had had some in stock previous. Paper gowns, 100 in stock. We're going to order 100 more. Paper towels, 1,500 boxes in stock. We're going to order 1,500 more. Disinfectant wipes, we have 72 in stock right now. We have 160 more tubs that are on order. Trash liners will be changed out once, in some cases, twice a day. Cleaner supplies, we have a whole stew of cleaner supplies, which we are ordering from the Stetson Product Central Dispensing System. We have disinfectant, special cleaners, glass cleaner. The actual disinfectant spray that we'll be using in the classrooms for the kids will be the Betco Fight Back RTU. We have 350 spray bottles that will have throughout the class, throughout the districts in the classrooms with 100 gallons more of that as a refill. Right now, we're utilizing the Victory Electric Static Backpack Sprayer. We have 10 on order, and then we have handheld sprays. We have five, and then we have five more on order, which all these orders that are on order, that are backordered, they're due at the end of August, beginning of September. So I think we're a timeline. We should have all this in stock. We have also ordered 10, 10-by-20 pop-up outdoor tents. We have ordered 36-by-36 acrylic sneeze guards for individual desks. We also have acrylic petitions installed at all the main offices to protect the secretaries. The Henry A. Yell, the JCS, the LGN are all getting brand-new bathroom faucets. The middle schools have already been installed, so four out of the five schools will have new bathroom faucets. All HVAC units have been serviced. If they haven't been, they are being serviced as we speak. All brand-new MERV eight filters will be installed to start the school year, and then we'll be monitoring them throughout the school year and replacing as necessary. I think that's my update. My cleaning protocol for the district will be on the school's website on the facilities page. You can find that there. That'll be there by the end of this week here, if anybody has any issues or any questions on the procedures that will be following.
We'll also be, thanks, Wade. We'll also going to be publishing so that, you know, a communications plan on how to respond. That's already, and it's already in a process, if you will. Once a decision is made, then the protocols change, so we'll be working on one. And then if we go to hybrid, we'll be working on the remote as we're going. If we go to remote, then we'll be working on that and potentially the hybrids. Couple of other things that are important. Food services is something that still needs to be worked on because it's a huge change between hybrid and remote. Remote, we know we're going out or having drop-bys. Hybrid, we have to do both because we are still under federal statute to feed children. So that you know, to date, we have fed over 60,000 meals through our food services programs since March 16th. And that's a number provided to me last night from our food services director, Mike Vaccaro. Pretty significant. We are also in the process of trying to hire a digital specialist who will work with teachers in terms of improving teaching and learning around hybrid and remote learning. And we're also trying to figure out the hiring of another school nurse so that our schools in a hybrid model will always have a nurse and a sixth nurse that would basically become our COVID-19 response nurse for the district. All of these funds within the bottom line of the budget, not utilizing any of the funds that are coming from the feds at this time, because those funds must be expended by December 30th, 2020. So if you hire someone, then you have to come up with where's the money coming from for the second half of the year. So that's going to be somewhat problematic. The other two things that I'd like to take on is local data that we're utilizing. So we currently, from the Board of Health, as of the third of this month, which was yesterday, we have one active case, 171 who are in, out of isolation and returning to regular life, if you will. And unfortunately, we've also had seven deaths. Those are very low numbers in comparison to some of the city numbers and the stories out of other parts of the country. The other part that's important is this whole idea that I started with earlier. It seems to be a belief that I have a hard time with, so I'm going to just put it out there. If we are looking to put kids behind a computer for seven hours a day, what's going to happen is we're going to lose kids like you wouldn't believe. And I'm going to look right at Vinnie Cersei, who at the time was the Director of Guidance and Counseling at the high school, and how many kids fell off of the grid because, A, we needed to do better. There's no doubt about that. But B, the idea of putting students behind the computer for the seven hours of direct instruction would be stand and deliver. That is not the way our teachers teach. Teachers are always teaching and working with students, but students are also working by themselves, working in pairs, working in projects, working on technology, working on best practices, taking a quiz while another student is actually still studying for the quiz. It's ongoing. It's not 24 people in the room doing it at the same time. Matter of fact, I would argue that except for mid-year and final exams and summative assessments, that is the only time the 24 kids in the classroom are doing the same thing. It's always different. Here's the change. The change is that in K to five, your children in K to five will be facing forward, only facing forward, not allowed to be in groups. And as a superintendent that's pretty active in going into classrooms, I can assure you, very rarely are classrooms in rows. And if they are, it's because the students are being assessed. So they need that, if you will, that space just for assessment. Students are on rugs, all pulled out of classrooms. Students are in circles, all being pulled out of classrooms. Students are in seats that are flexible, all pulled out of classrooms. Already, these things are already gone from our classrooms. And so the idea here has to be, and we understand it, I have, as a superintendent, I have to come up with a place on a hybrid model for what's going to happen to my daughter three days a week. I'm in the same boat with two working adults that many of you are going to be in. And younger, it's even more difficult than older, but I don't think any of us want our students behind a computer for seven hours a day on three remote days during the hybrid model or fully in the remote. So it's really, really important that, A, we blow up the thoughts we have from March where we considered at the time teachers to be saving graces. And right now, because of the politics, we're going through a whole different perspective of public education. And on the other side of it, also think of this as an approach where what we've provided to you so far is exactly the, what I would call a template, not a final of what this is going to look like. And the reason why it can't be final is exactly what my staff spoke about to you earlier. A, making sure that every student is online, making sure that every student has a meal, making sure that every student's IEP is being followed via the model that was selected by families. Making sure that if the students have access to AP courses, they still have access in a remote situation. Making sure that students in an inclusion are still getting curriculum provided to them in an accommodating way, which in my opinion, with half of the kids in the classroom, should be able to be done by general educators every day, not just special educators. And then lastly, in this whole round of what we're doing is, I've never worked as a superintendent, as a former teacher, as a principal in this type of a situation. And so we have to have some real understanding of folks of where we work isn't where we want to be. We've put together a pretty specific, detailed model of where we think we want to go, but this is going to have to change. Somebody was asking a question about siblings and busing. Of course, we want to do that. What happens when it doesn't work? How are we going to address that family? We have to, so from now on, after the selection is made, is where the dirty work comes in in terms of, how do we really say to parents, what one are you choosing? If we go hybrid, do you still want to just stay remote? So that's part one. Part two, how does that impact the number of students on a bus, the number of students coming in on a day? Number three, how many parents want to do hybrid but then eventually want to move to remote because they're not certain? How does that happen? Remote to hybrid is actually more difficult, I would suggest. Then making sure that our parents are up to date with the latest information about the curriculum that we're using, if in fact you're fully remoted. If you look at our distribution, our elementary teachers traditionally teach four different content areas, English, math, science, social studies, or I call it literacy, numeracy, science, and social studies. They're providing interventions to students and supports. Many of our fourth and fifth-grade teachers are doing two or four classes in terms of the content areas. Um many of our fourth and fifth grade teachers are probably doing two or four classes um in terms of the content areas. At the high school level, we're teaching two to three different courses. And at times, I've seen some of our teachers teach four different classes. That's four different preparation areas. At the middle school, we're teaching one predominantly, which is you're an English seven teacher and English eight, and there's actually two on each side. Very different approach in all of those scenarios and the responsibilities that go back to teachers. I'm trying to address the question that's come up over and over again is why do you need a PD day? Why do you need a half of anything at any point? As you probably know, we've used halves in the past. We need it more now because in order for us to deal with the very question about fifth grade isn't good enough yet, that was presented as a question. It's still not where I think it should be as a common, a common question um on, on uh the forum tonight. Those are the reasons why. We wanna collect that feedback, not in June, but as we go. The committee will get a recommendation from me that we look at everything within four to six week periods. Collect data, collect your thoughts on what's going on on a more regular basis and sit with our teachers and say, this is what's happening. This may be a false reality or maybe an actual reality, but you need to know it as a teacher now, not three months from now. It's too late three months from now. And I think the other part that I'd like to address and then take on more, more of your questions is the school committee is gonna be making a difficult decision, as I said earlier. That decision could be taken away from them Thursday morning after they make their decision tomorrow, where the state just comes in and says blah, because things are spiking. Rhode Island just announced that um that uh man, um folks in Rhode Island have to check into Massachusetts now because they have a spike going on in Rhode Island. First question I would get from a staff member who lives there, and I have quite a few, is can I come to work? Traditionally, when you're working every day somewhere, crossing the border, it's allowed. It's not part of that. However, we haven't heard that yet. So now I have teachers that are just worried about their jobs and can I commit? There's questions um lastly about what happens to educators if they quote choose not to commit. It's a very specific process. Um there's, there's, there's an FMLA poss- possibility within their own medical condition or that of a family. There's the CARES Act FMLA that really gives them childcare support, but it cuts off it X number of days and X number of dollars. So it's not gonna give somebody the entire year off. There's a local contractual that could potentially give somebody leave of absence without pay. That turns around into a huge medical issue for a family. If you're the medical provider of insurance from your family and you have to take a leave of absence because of XYZ, now who, who's got the childcare? Um you know, and I'm not saying that as an excuse because everybody in the world is dealing with these. It's just our industry isn't used to dealing it in this way and the way that we're seeing uh, that we're seeing it. The delivery of services to me that Vinnie and Casey talked about earlier is the key. And I want us to talk about delivery of service. And I'll, I will, I promise I will end here now. I want you to think about the delivery of service in this district for all students. I have a federal mandate for students on an IEP and a five oh four contract between me. It's really literally the superintendent of schools. I'm the one that gets the letters that said you screwed something up, not anyone else. And um and by the way, they don't send you letters if you did something good from the federal government for the record. Um but I have a mandate there, but I also have a mandate to make sure that we provide the best education we can in one of these models going forward for every student. And that's why I think there is gonna be a real change in the approach that we have. Um folks I know are worried about the state teachers unions and some of the comments that they made. Um you know what? The state teachers union, in my opinion, can't just strike statewide. Um they can put some action in play if they like, but it's a very positive relationship in Norton. It does not mean that we agree all the time. Um it does not mean that we have, don't have disagreements, but I can tell you that there's a lot of respect amongst those in leadership in the school committee, the administration, and the teachers union about putting things on the table and having difficult discussions. And those are already starting. They've been happening. Um and they're gonna continue as soon as this process is um um that, that, that goes forward. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Dr. Bayetta. I think um it's important to know that this is really like a lot of information and we understand even for all of us who have looked at these slides. Um as school committee members, we have all been part of the sort of committees um that have looked at all of these different options. So I think for um the past few weeks, at least, we've been really entrenched with this and it's even a lot of information for us to take in. So um we are happy to answer questions. Um I think that you will also be receiving after this meeting um the opportunity to ask questions um via some form of a Google Doc or something like that. So we'll have um maybe an opportunity to have those questions answered and either presented at the meeting tomorrow night or even uh maybe somehow accessed online or something even before the meeting. So we're gonna do our best to answer questions. I'm gonna turn it over to Jen O'Neil, um who will kinda go through the questions. If your question happens to get lost or not answered um tonight, please, there's another opportunity tomorrow. Um you certainly, Jen and I were talking earlier and one of the things that we had talked about is um I don't always see the questions Jen's asking and um Jen doesn't always, you know, see the questions that I see. So I'm not sure how that happens, but um please know that we're gonna do our best to answer your questions either today or tomorrow. Um certainly, I'll just kinda put this out there as well. There is the let's talk option on the school website. So if perchance your question is not answered directly tonight, um please use that as an opportunity to reach out directly to Dr. Bayetta. Um it also can sort of help you reach other people within the school department. So that's always an option as well. So.
And Carolyn, I just, just, everybody should see it now. If there's on it, that I changed my name to my email address. So if people wanna send me an email, I'm pretty good at responding um quickly. If there's a lot of questions, uh I might just do a, a big thing tomorrow that sends it out to everybody, but feel free to ask.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bayetta. So you can see his email is um right there for anybody to use. You can also, if you are looking to speak to somebody, maybe in regards to busing or in regards to more of the facility questions, you can also reach Matt and Wade through those sort of um let's talk option as well. So. Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Carolyn. I would just ask that if anyone um has a question, that they submit it through the Q and A button. It actually makes it much easier for us to track questions and see the ones that we've answered and those that are still open. Um so if you have um a question, it'd be really great if you could put it in that way. I'm going to hit the, just the last few questions that are in the chat box before I move over in that direction. Um so the first question was regarding um transportation and carpooling. And how are we able to suggest carpooling when we're having so much conversation about physical distancing?
You know, I, I, I tried to respond to that, but I responded to the panelists, so my, um my apologies. So we've been on a number of Zoom calls uh with Desi, the Commissioner's Office, uh around this topic where it's been introduced over and over again. So part of it is trying to address um the issue that most of us believe that students are playing in neighborhoods, they hanging around together. And there are families that are saying, you know what, we're hanging around together, so we have quote our own cohort going on. I don't know how much I believe that, um but it is, those are direct quotes that, that Matt used about carpooling. The other problem that we have here is remember that we have required by statute transportation and then we have pay and ride. And so um if we didn't have pay and ride, I hate to say it this way, folks, but if we didn't have pay and ride, we wouldn't be dealing with some of the busing issues because we'd have less kids taking buses. Um but we provide that as a service as much as we can. And we are being asked to do it at three feet with the alternating um if you um seat. That's the way to um keep students separated. And then cleaning in between that, which right now we're waiting on really specific protocols from Desi on it. Um but really, it's a wiping down every between, right now, between every ride. In other words, if the bus is used twice, it's gonna be cleaned twice. Or if it's used three times, it's gonna be cleaned three times. And that's the reason why in some of our scenarios, that's the letting out of school time is pretty late for some of our schools.
Um the next question's regarding the remote learning days. Um I, I think the person is referring to the hybrid model. How will um lab teaching is extremely important for remote day, remote days. How will the teacher do that for teaching some students in person?
Yeah, it's probably one of the hardest questions for us to address. So there's a couple of ways for us to try to look at this. Number one is um what do we ask students to do on the day that they're on remote from the day that they're actually in school? So that's gonna be part one. Part two is what platforms do we think would be the best connection for that? How do we make this, the work count? In other words, it's not just, it's an option. The word option is going, I, I tell you, if I hear the word option in a plan, I'm not gonna be very happy. It's not optional. We're required to teach, do teaching and learning both synchronous and asynchronous throughout. So um that's gonna be the issue. And we will utilize where we can, teachers that are, through the process, are going to be staying home and making them potentially remote teachers. Um but right now, as I said earlier, that is the biggest headache for us um to deal with on, on day one going forward. Um as soon as the plan is selected, then the next thing I have to do is really move towards figuring out from staff who's taking the year off, um who's got a medical situation, and that requires documentation. Who's willing to do that and um and do the remote um, you know, learning during those days? And there's their in, and is there the potential to hire staff? That would be the other part.
Thanks, Joe. Um question regarding the hybrid model, what schedule would the hay follow? The elementary schedule that we shared was a draft, but the hay was grouped in there as well. And I think it was just a typo on the top. It did say K to three. I apologize for that. Um but it would be the, you know, the one remote day and the every other model that we shared with you. Um question here regarding physical education. Have we considered um doing that in person as well outside? Yes, we absolutely have. We're considering all of our options. Um again, some of the ideas and schedules are not finalized at this point. They're, they are draft. So we are thinking about that, Carolyn. So thank you for that. Um uh there's a question here regarding the mo- remote learning and the professional day. Um I think, Joe, you already addressed that. Um student, students be grouped by family when possible. If your children are on a different schedule, can you switch them to be on the same schedule?
We're gonna try to. Uh we're gonna try, again, we're gonna try to do things to the best that we can, keeping in mind those class sizes and those situations. Um but we, we're gonna try to be friend, family-friendly as much as we can because we recognize uh the potential of older kids supporting the younger siblings or just being together. Um you know, we don't want to create a community of people going home, you know, in fourth and fifth grade by themselves for the entire afternoon. Um uh after they've done half a day of remote learning or the day of remote learning. That's, that's not a good situation.
Will students at the Yale and the middle school be switching class or will the teachers be switching classrooms?
Yeah, a lot of discussion taking place with uh both there and at the middle school. And though we'll finalize some of those um you know, once the model is done, but more and more looking like teachers will be moving, um not students moving.
Um and there was a question about who will be teaching the remote if parents have the option. I think Karen, you covered that a little bit when we went into um it would be an online program and we're hoping that we'll have staff that will be able to check in with students. Um but until we have some of these other things figured out, we don't know exactly who that will be. Classrooms are typically very hot and now with kids in masks all day, how are we going to keep the classrooms?
Yeah, so we have to provide uh mask breaks so that when, again, taking the look at the schedules that you've seen, what we would build into those teaching and learning periods is teaching and learning about the safety. So talking to students about that by taking the mask at six feet, at more than six feet. Um we were currently purchasing tents for outside of our schools, for outside learning, but also for breaks and for the opportunity, especially in the month of September. I think when we get into October, November, then the tents probably are, you know, you gotta wear your coats. But um yes, areas like the, you know, third floor of the hay, third floor of uh the middle school, those are, those are tough spaces for heat in September. Um so our idea is, is to move air, which is one of the things uh we've been doing. We actually just got a um a slight complaint from a neighbor because one of our systems, we've really been uh turning that system on to really take a look at what it can utilize in. And we're in good shape there. Um and Wade took care of making sure that the neighbors were happy. But at the end of the day, you know, during the day, we're gonna have to crank those A, those HVAC systems at a higher level to bring in more air. Um you gotta remember that, that this is, and that's coming from the outside in, right? That's the key. You bring air from the outside um in, um not just recirculating air in um, in uh, in our buildings.
We're gonna be changing the air as much as we can in these classrooms. Dump as much fresh air as possible. Um and, and purging the, the schools really before school starts. So uh we'll be starting four o'clock in the morning, probably four thirty uh and just dumping as much fresh air into the building as we possibly can.
Yeah, and the air filtration systems at the schools are, by industry standard, are uh to be changed out four times a year. We, we will be looking at reviewing those on a monthly basis and change them out if we have to. So that, you know, people understand that, you know, um we're, we're just not saying, oh, we'll change it all three months from now. We're literally gonna say, you know what, at, at some point, there'll be a log kept. I've already ordered that, that, that the logs, that they be reviewed, that they be signed off on. Um and then that we hold people accountable for, for those things.
All right, um just a reminder, people could put their questions in the Q and A. That would make it much easier. Thank you so much. Um question here regarding the cohort division and what exactly that will look like. Are we dividing by um alphabet? Um ultimately, that's what we'll try to do. Um however, one of the things we have to look at is, you know, someone else's question, talks about students on EP, on IEPs. We wanna make sure that you're not putting all of your students on IEPs or all of your English language learners or all of your AP students into a single cohort. You wanna make sure that those cohorts are diverse. So we have to start with that piece. Um and then, of course, from one building to the next, we won't be able to divide up exactly. So it's going to take some work. The principals have already started looking at this and they're in communication about what these cohorts are looking like at each of the building levels. Um and I know, you know, as a parent, we want to be able to plan. I'm honestly feeling the exact same way about my own children. Um but that's why we will be sending out a survey to families um either on this Friday or first thing Monday morning. And what will happen is that every student will have their own unique link for a survey. So as a parent, I would get a survey for my sixth grader and a survey for my second grader. It's a very brief survey. It is not sixty questions. It's about six or seven and just basically saying, where are you? Are you, are you going to send your child? Are they going to ride the bus? And that will help us with all the cohort planning. Um and we really do ask families to complete that survey as soon as they're able to.
And, and I think, Jen, I think it's really important at this point to just briefly also inform uh two hundred and eighty-one folks on this call. And I know the school committee and you guys know this. Don't wait to ask a question because you have a concern or an issue that you just think is, you know, too ridiculous to ask, if you will, in terms of issues around a five oh four, an IEP, uh an AP class, a college prep class. Uh can I still take this class? Am I able to take a different class if I do it online? Um those are all great questions that um could mean something different. All of your children learn differently. So our, our um, you know, determination here is to try to find the best way to make that transition for children the best that we can. I'm very worried about the social emotional development of kids. Um I'm, I'm worried as a superintendent and I'm worried as a parent. Um you know, this is um, some of my staff has seen me more irritable in the last few months um than ever before in the seventy years that I've been in Norton. And I know it's because I'm not able to do the job the way that I like to do the job, which is to be in the classroom, talking to teachers, you know, having a coffee hour with parents, uh returning my emails in a way where it's not repeating myself for the thirtieth time. Um those are things that are stressing adults out, never mind um our students. And I will tell you, our students have been reaching out to me and they wanna come back in some way. Some of them are saying the hybrid and please have sports, please have activities. I need to do something after school. Um you know, very, very true statements. And some are saying I'm worried. So I think it's an opportunity for us to make sure that all, all situations need to come forward. And I would prefer to get them over social media.
How are you going to ensure strong education for kindergarten students given the inability for kids to interact and requirement they have to wear masks and physically distance?
Yeah, so I think again, when you're looking at the area of the younger children, um this is gonna be an area that we're gonna keep a very sharp eye on um starting on day one. This is an area where discussing and looking at having those students back more often than just the hybrid model twice a week is something to take a look at. Um and again, using data, using information um in order to make those um decisions. But I think everything in K one, two, and three, um and then on the other end, nine through twelve is something that we're gonna keep a real eye on. Um some of it based on research that's out there. Um students at the younger age being um in some cases um having more of an issue because of things like the technology. Um in most of our cases, I would say that our students are pretty good at that. Um but we wanna keep an eye on some real live data in our district. Not only C nineteen situations that could happen, of course, that could happen at any point. But also, how are we teaching students and what are our teachers seeing? What are our parents seeing? What are our students feeling? So that we can respond to it quicker and better than we have in the past.
Um question regarding cohorts at the middle school level, and we addressed that a little bit. Um how are we going? How are we going to help students staying apart during transitions throughout the building, walking in hallways? And how will the classrooms be cleaned in between classes?
Yeah, so in between classrooms, areas, again, I think what we're reading over and over again, I just did two different readings from two different sources today. Specifically talk about this whole idea of high-touch areas versus touch areas. A little less of a concern, that's number one. Number two, we do have, we will have protocols in place for cleaning. We will have signage and then our staff utilizing, supporting students with that. I don't know if anybody's gone to Shaw, stopped in Shaw Panifis lately. People can't read the arrows anymore, you know, so those are adults. Or they're choosing not to, don't forget that part. Or they'll leave in their carriages at the end, but they physically walk up. It's still the same thing, by the way, just because you left your carriage behind. Or people walking into restaurants aren't, because they are, aren't walking six feet apart from each other. So these are gonna be the big things that we really have to teach students during the first few weeks of being alive, if that's the direction that we take.
Alrighty, if you have a child on IEP that does not do well with remote learning, would that child be able to physically go to school each day?
Yeah, so these are gonna be the individual cases that we really have to take a look at. So Desi has been very clear to us that the students with significant needs and/or students who become at-risk need students, that we really need to sit down and look at it. And that's what we'll do. So I would say, in your particular case, once the schedule out and everything else, really consider reaching out to our director, Vinnie Cersei, who will probably work with you or talk to Casey Russo, our coordinator of special education, to really take a look at your child's IEP, to really take a look at how the child is learning. And then to potentially make a decision that could be, to make a change like the one you suggested.
We are working with, on specific protocols in flow right now. But those determinations, in the way, a number of our departments looking at the guidance that Desi is providing. So we'll be able to help with those individual situations.
If a family chooses to go fully remote, but then the school ends up switching to remote, can the child switch in to be with their teacher and peers or do they have to stay with the online sophomore program?
No, they'd probably be able to switch. Yeah, they'd probably be able to switch.
There's a question about the best email addresses to send comments to school committee regarding the decision.
If they like to send it to you, it's a public records, I'm a public records email, so I have to send it to them if you tell me that I have to send it to them. Otherwise, you can use the first name, last initial, at Norton dot K one, two dot MA dot US for the school committee members.
So what I did was I actually just put a link to our school committee page from our website, which has all of their email addresses on it. And so they're all available there for you. Questions regarding the survey. The survey was sent out to families on June thirteenth and was open for about three weeks. It was sent out via our Blackboard Connect system. So there is a possibility if you, your email address is not updated within our student information system, that maybe that could be why you didn't get it. I know there are some people, it goes right to spam or to the junk folder as well. So always check there. Comment here about the buses. Buses still look very close at three feet. Are we able to do them at six?
No, we are not able to do them at six at this time. But that doesn't mean that it couldn't be six based upon selections by parents around hybrid or remote, if it comes to that. Or if we just go totally, well, if we go totally remote, you don't have to worry about it. But right now, it's at six feet alternating.
What are the cleaning protocols for the buses?
I mean, excuse me, three feet, thank you, three feet. Cleaning protocols right now are being worked on if it's for buses. But specifically what we're being told is literally a wipe down in between runs. The question came up last week, I shared it with Matt, on is it AM and PM or is it between runs? They're gonna supposedly get back to us on that.
When we think about remote learning, are there best practices we can consider as parents to make the experience more effective? For example, giving headsets to help the kids focus or adding additional time for the younger students provided instruction on using the tech, et cetera.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we wanna do, and it's a great, it's a great common question. I think one of the things we wanna do, and I know Karen's already shaking her head, is really just kind of provide a little bit of a guide. Once these decisions are made, really work to provide parents a guide. I know not every parent's gonna read it or use it, but try to give you a guide with some links on how you can support your child if, on a hybrid model, on remote days, that type of thing. I think that would be something for us to do. And the other thing I haven't even mentioned to the team, but we're probably gonna do some videos with parents, kind of like a parent university type of thing. Probably in the next, as we get closer to this school year, just on best practices, socialization, keeping an eye on your child and any type of, you know, things like mood swings or, you know, they're not doing well and irritable or all of that, so that we can provide a service if and when needed.
Well, remote students have access to their teacher while the teacher will be teaching in the other group.
Right now, the answer to that is probably not. It's an area of significant concern. We're trying to figure out how do we have that happen within the day? Even if it was a quote, I hate to say, on the remote day, even if it was that one time to check in. The problem is we have to create at the secondary level schedules within schedules. So that would mean we would have to take the physical time together to be, quote, less in order to have the remote be more. So that's gonna be the issue that we face statewide with the hybrid model. Unless we're trying to figure out areas like facilitators, people that would be checking in on students, making sure that they're doing their work. That's gonna be the big one that needs to be addressed still.
Could we be forced into remote learning if the teachers' unions go to force?
Well. Yeah, so, you know, I'm gonna suggest to you that anything can happen. But once the school committee makes its decision going forward, then from there, I have to, on behalf of the committee and working with the committee, complete what's called impact bargaining under chapter one fifty E. Because it's considered a changing working conditions, because they're being asked to do things differently, if you will, then everything within the model, they have the right to bring to the table and bargain. And so does the management. So the committee and I have met in executive session, which is the way to do it, and discussed, you know, the priorities of the school committee as it pertains to the models once one of the models is selected, and then even if you have to move to another model. So we've had those discussions. They, on their side, will do the same once a model is selected. We've been having a labor management committee discussion since March, meeting once a week almost consistently. Except I think maybe two weeks in June, we took some time off just because we were done and we were moving into the summer months. But the goal there is to really talk about the priorities. So we know that the priorities are safety. This is a public health emergency. So we know that any type of a return to a physical building requires that we really talk about the specifics of what that means. Second, I think we have to utilize data and information, not only about Massachusetts, but, you know, talking about Georgia and return to school is not a good idea, and I'll tell you why. They haven't even had a mask ban in place as a state until later on. They're just packing kids into buildings, not remote learning or hybrid. They're just going full throttle with everybody back. So I think we have to really take a look at the data that's available. And I think the third part becomes that this has a different impact on every family and their child as well as every employee that works for Norton Public Schools and their family. And so people are gonna have to make decisions based on that. And then that requires me, as the employer, to make other decisions going forward.
Okay, if teachers cannot come to work for whatever reason, would teachers have, would they have the opportunity to work from home?
Yeah, so the goal here, again, it depends on the federal legislation and the federal rights and the contractual rights that an employee has. And I've used myself as an example. I have an autoimmune disease. It's moderate to severe. I have a difficult time, I've shared this with many of you before, battling things like flu and all of that. There's already five different, probably should even say this, there's already five different medications I can't take. I have some else, I know I do. But I also know where my brain is for me personally and what I have to do. I have to be extra safe, especially as our buildings open up. I'm probably not gonna be as visible as I want to be in the classrooms without doing it in a really safe way. That bothers me a lot. But as I said to my staff in the communication, for the sake of my daughter, my wife, and myself, we've gone through that process and decision. Other employees are gonna be doing the same thing.
If remote, would children be given an opportunity to meet their teacher in person, however briefly?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try to, I don't know if in person can happen, but we have had some discussions about a meet and greet outside type of thing, you know, very small, social distancing and all of that. But, you know, right now, what we're trying to do is figure out ways to open school. And then I think as we see data and information, what does that look like in order to do some of the things you folks suggested in that question? It's a great question. We definitely want to see kids and adults together. There's nothing better. I went to the summer school program last week, you know, walking in as a big guy like I am with a mask on and, you know, they really don't know me because they're really, really young. It was different, but you know what? Nobody cried, nobody ran away from me. Couple of kids were jumping all over the place because that's what kids do in that age. And now we have to teach them not to do that. So that's kind of in itself questionable, I guess. But yeah, we're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that adults and children see each other.
Under a full remote learning model for students in K to three, would they be signed into a single Zoom session? Or would they have to sign in and out for each class?
Yeah, we're looking at some.
Did you guys talk about that, Karen and your group, or? Sorry, Joe, I cut you off.
I think, so you gotta remember that if you're in a remote situation and all of us are in remote, let's say, and we're gonna have to create a schedule where kids are moving from one meeting, if you will, one class experience to the next, just like they would if they were walking the hallway from one class to another. I think we'll have to create that at the elementary level as well. And so those are the types of, if you will, build-in breaks that will allow for the day to be a day, but without necessarily students just behind a computer the entire time, including having a lunch break and a recess break if that becomes part of the final schedules.
All right, there's a couple of questions here about scheduling. I'm actually gonna lump them all together because I think basically it's very much along the same lines. So will we have to adjust schedules? And I would just remind everyone that what we showed you tonight is a draft, it's not set in stone, to reflect the loss of time with busing or, you know, getting kids down the hallway at six feet and cleaning the classrooms before in-between sessions, et cetera. How will that affect the schedule?
Great questions. So the commissioner of education is stuck pretty firmly to the hours and the requirements. However, based upon, as the school year starts, we will be able to address directly with him issues that are specific to Norton. So let's say because of busing, there's a situation, which by the way, is gonna happen in a lot of districts, not just Norton. Or let's say the passing time is taking a little longer than we wanted to. Those are things that we'll be able to fix and address. Now, one of the questions that I have is, are mask breaks considered? Or more breaks that we've been asked to do with kids because they do have a mask on and it is September? How are we not counting that as part of their education? They're learning, they're taking a break, yes. But the fact is, we're trying to give them the opportunity to continue to learn by also teaching them best practices around the safety.
Okay, if a parent decides that in-person learning is not working for their child, would they be able to switch them to remote?
Yes.
Great. And the draft schedule, do the draft schedules mirror the in-classroom learning schedules? It seems like it's a long time for little ones to be on a screen.
Yeah, this is, this is always, this is, how do I say this without hurting people's feelings? So for one family, it's not enough time. For another family, it's too much time. So that's the real debate here, and it depends on where your child is and what grade they're in. So if you're in the hybrid model and you're coming to school, you're in remote for half of a day Monday, and then let's say it's that Tuesday, Thursday schedule. You're gonna be physically in school and you'll be following the schedule and seeing people and all of that. Fifty percent roughly of the classes in, if not less. On the remote day, we're trying to figure out the best structure, what that looks like in terms of the academics that students will be required to complete as part of that day. Now, if you shift to full remote, the issue here becomes, we just said it, I think, a couple of question ago, which is establishing during those remote times, the time to move from one to another. For example, I haven't been able to move in less than five minutes from one remote meeting to another. When do you get up and go to the bathroom? Is it, do you make it a ten-minute break and make it a bathroom break as well? So now kids aren't going to the bathroom during class or during direct time. And they're reminding ourselves that teaching and learning happens in both synchronous and asynchronous every single day in a live classroom. So if your child is behind the computer with me right now, their high school history teacher, you might say, well, they have to be learning, Bia is giving them a lesson right now. But if you don't see me behind that, that doesn't mean they're not. They should have and will have tasks that they're completing, which then may mean they're in a subgroup that the teacher set up remotely. So myself, Matt, and Jen are three students and Wade is our teacher, and he's put us in a group and we're gonna work fifteen minutes together and then we're gonna come back. Or another scenario might be that I'm being asked to do something by myself and the teacher's gonna check in with me solely because maybe she sees that I'm struggling or he sees that I'm actually maybe the pace I'm going at is really fast. I'm actually maybe ahead of the curve. So maybe they can provide me with both supplemental that's supportive for a student that's behind or supplemental for a student who's actually needs further enrichment. So you gotta think of it as a moving part.
If a special education student opts for remote learning, with the self-directed program, what happens with their services?
So specialized services will have to be provided via teletherapy. That's what it comes down to in that particular case. And academic services are gonna have to be provided directly as well. So if you have a student with a specialized reading program, we're still gonna have to figure out a schedule to put them in. We may have to work with some extending of hours with students. We may see that some of those services actually happen after the traditional school day, remote school day. But we will still have to provide services. And we have to do it at, literally, the way that we're saying we're supposed to do it, which is we have to provide you that service. Vinnie, I'll turn it over to you if you have something else to add.
You know, I was gonna say that I just think it may require a different approach than we've seen in the past for those particular students in terms of, as you said, after normal hours, teletherapy, you know, those kinds of services. The issue would be some of the inclusion opportunities. Those are things that we're still working on across out of the state level in that manner. We'll still have an individualized remote learning plan that each student's liaison will be working on with the other providers. So, you know, we do have to, as Joe said, we have to provide those services. We have to figure out how to go about that.
Yeah, and just to answer a question that was in earlier about, I think it was potentially from a staff member, but a question I got earlier about Massachusetts putting the stop on Rhode Island folks coming in. If in fact you're going from your home to work in Massachusetts and back, that's an exemption under the rule. So for the staff that works, that lives in Rhode Island, that works for us, there is an exemption for that under the statute, under the emergency order.
Question about clarifying the teachers' responsibilities for the online parent-chosen remote learning. There is not an expectation that you be teaching, they would be teaching and, you know, handling this online remote program. That's why we've selected an online remote program. We do hope that we will have someone to oversee that. So I think that's probably a question that we'll clarify more completely with our staff. What software program will be used for parent-selected remote learning? At the secondary level, that's a program called Edgenuity. And we are still finalizing the elementary program. The Department of Education is actually releasing some of their recommendations. It was supposed to be, I think, today or tomorrow. So we will have that answer in the very near future.
And I also, I also add to that that one of the things that I know is not necessarily keen to some, but I also think we have to take a look at platforms that provide students different ways of learning. In other words, not just your traditional math, English, science, social studies, but classes that are much more specific around learning STEM and technology and careers than just the typical. And that's gonna be a potential change as well in some of the course delivery that we have at the secondary level or even at the elementary level.
And then that third question about remote learning was if AP courses are available to high school students? And yes, they are, based on our call the other day, right Karen? Yeah, okay. If the district is remote, is it possible for the specialized programs to address an in-person service on a hybrid schedule rather than going those four days? Vinnie?
You repeat that?
Yep, so if we're remote, instead of the Yep. So if we're remote, instead of the, instead of our specialized programs going the four and a half days or the four days, what they do in every other, how would that, what would that look like?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we would have to sort of talk about that on an individual level because I'd have to know what that particular student's IEP called for, especially regarding some of the related services. But it's something we could, I'm sure we could work, work around.
And Vinny, I'm gonna let you answer this next question too, or, you know, what our thought process is and Joe and Wade. If we have some of our specialist teachers that are going to a classroom and working with students and then going somewhere else, such as a special education teacher or one of our OTs, how can we contain that cross-room, cross-person concern?
So, go ahead, Joe. I was gonna just simply say that we have to try to attempt our best depending on situations and what's happening in classrooms. For example, we have some classrooms where we have students that are more physical or, you know, put their hands in their mouth more often, those type of things. We'll have to use protocols around those classrooms and people in and out in a way that allows for when an adult goes in there and comes out, there's a protocol in place for that person before they go to the next place if they're just going into a classroom where that's not happening. But I also think we have to be mindful that it's not a lot different going into a classroom from place to place than all of us going into grocery store or any of that. We're trying to came, can, to have the best cleaning processes and teach people the best way to protect themselves because that protects others. So we may have some areas where a full-on gown with the face mask, with the face shield is taking place, while in another room, the person doesn't need any of that, they just need their mask. And we'll just have to play that place, place by place, person by person. We may have some people who wanna wear that all day, no matter what. Okay, we'll do that. And we are making a recommendation that masks be one by all. We are going deeper than the recommendation from DCE on grades two to 12 must. We are recommending pre-K through 12 in all adults, except where there are medical conditions that excuse a person.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is we're, we're working with the building administration and we will be working with the therapists and those kinds of folks to, to try to limit those exposures the best we can by, by scheduling throughout the day within a building, within a series of classrooms, you know, trying to schedule as many of the, the therapies on the, on the remote, quote unquote, the remote day of hybrid instead of the days that they're going to, the children are going into the inclusion setting. So we're gonna work around that the best we can. But also, as Joe said, it's, it's gonna be making sure they follow those protocols, that they, they use good hygiene after, that they, you know, they do those things to ensure their safety as well as the next group they move.
Thanks, guys. Um, how many additional hotspots do we have per school?
We have, not necessarily per school, they're really per district. So as families let us know if they are in need, we'll be able to provide, I guess, for as many students as we need, right? It's part of our responsibility to help you get on the internet if you do not have internet at home.
Is there a fund available that where we could donate money to those who may be struggling with internet and other essentials? Matt, I believe we had set up a way for people to help if needed, if desired?
Yeah, pretty standard. If you wanna make a donation to the school, just mail it into the superintendent's office. You should make note in a letter as to what you want to donate it for, so we can do our best to apply it to that, that direct item that you want to donate for.
And Jen, can I also just note that that was specifically for the internet essentials from Comcast? But we have partnered with Comcast. Certainly we'll take any donations that people are willing to, to give to the school department. But, you know, we're able to work with Comcast to help families, right? So if they have multiple children, we're not gonna send multiple hotspots home. So we wanna work with families.
Okay, thank you. I would be interested in hearing more from the Norton Teachers Union in regard to how teachers are feeling about the plans and safety.
You can reach out to pretty much any teacher, I guess, and, and speak to them if you'd like. But I would say go to the president of the Teachers Union, which is Shannon Taylor. And again, it's the same process, S-Taylor, B-A-Y-L-O-R, at Norton.K12.us. Sorry, Shannon, I think you're on the line and I just gave out your information. But if somebody really wants to get to the truth, I think you get the facts from the Teachers Union leader. That's the best way to get information.
Parent choice, I heard the parent choice remote plan, but wasn't clear what this teacher-to-student interaction would be each day. Can we briefly explain that? As thinking about primary students specifically?
Well, I think there's a couple of different, I don't know, I don't know, can you repeat the question one more time? I'm just thinking of.
For parent-selected remote, what would be, how, what type of student-to-teacher interaction would a younger student?
Again, that, that's gonna go back to that whole question we have about the interaction piece. It's the biggest flaw, if you will, right now, because we don't have the data on, can we move kids around? I'll give you an example. Let's say there's, let's say there's in kindergarten, there's 150 kids registered to come to school this year. Let's say 50 people decide to go remote only. That potentially allows for me to reconfigure the other 100 students and open up a teacher to be a remote teacher for the 50 kids in some way, shape or form in a schedule. In other words, when you, when you have so many people saying, I wanna do this instead, there's the potential that those class lists could change. So if a class was 24 and it's in the hybrid 12 and 12, maybe that class is only six and six. And now I can make, make it into a class of 12, thereby potentially opening up a teacher for a classroom remotely.
There's a question here regarding fans that we use in our classroom for air circulation. Studies are showing that this is not good for public areas as it spreads air around the room, which could be infected. With this in mind, what do we have for, what do we have in mind for cooling the rooms if we can't use fans?
Yeah, there's, there's, right now, we have the unit events that are in each of the classrooms and that's what we utilize. We have some classrooms that are required to have air conditioning per student's IEPs, and we have a bunch of those. But in terms of the rest of the buildings, there are no buildings that have classrooms with the air conditioning. And in very little, small areas do we allow for fans to just be blowing. And usually it's only, only been during the hottest states. So that's gonna be an area where we talk to the Board of Health directly and say, thoughts on using fans, you know, third floor of the L school, as an example, or any classroom district-wide.
For students that had a hard time on Zoom calls this spring, how can we force them to be on calls remotely each day? For some of this, for some was next to impossible to sit there and be on the call, et cetera.
Well, thank you for being honest. As a parent of a teenager, if you have any tips, please send them my way. I think that what, what we're gonna try to do is try to make, instead of a Zoom being more of a check-in with a quick lesson or a game or really try to get students into the idea that, of, of some direct instruction with some activity that they have to complete and then coming back together instead of, instead of what we did in, in earlier this year. But there is no, there's no direct way. I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's schools that have been doing this for a long time remotely, and it always requires an adult in the room. And it's usually the parent, and it's usually actually been done through the students who are at home, homeschooling students that utilize those platforms, and that's one of the ways that they, they learn. But they're still having a parent with them for a significant amount of time. Not a good answer, I know.
I haven't heard anything about staffing. Will there be teachers and staff that cannot teach in person?
Probably.
High risk, and how will some?
Yeah, and I have to be very careful as the employer about who those people are. So if you find out, it's, it's, it's literally just somebody isn't here, you won't get specific if it's due to whatever they decide. It's a, it's still a FERPA HIPAA and every other acronym that you think of that I have to follow.
Is the Champions Program a definitive option now for faculty with school-aged children that may be learning remotely?
So we just, so Champions themselves just really got this presentation yesterday because they're members of the steering committee. And one of them actually also sends their child here, so they got it that way. So they will, after the school committee votes, then they will respond to my request for options for that, for that to happen, including, one of the options that was put at the table at the statewide was the discussion that school employees, school teachers could actually send their students to their home-based school every day in a hybrid model. And I guess that wasn't well received because the state union said, we just want remote. So it wasn't even really discussed, but that's a discussion we can have as a district. Doesn't stop myself and the school committee from having that discussion. And also, I would continue to say, you know, for in a hybrid model in Norton, we do have school choice. We definitely would have seats because the hybrid model gives us even more seat flexibility. And so there's a potential, like many of us who do that now for you for the year, to not have to worry for two days a week about where your child is because of the remote, because they would be three days a week with you or in a school within Norton Public Schools.
What happens if the desks for the high school don't come in?
Because of the hybrid model, it's, 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 won't be as much of an issue at all.
For buses, are we planning on screening at each stop? What if, what happens if we notice a student isn't feeling well? Will we have to wait?
Students, yeah, responsibility for screening really falls to the parents in terms of before you leave your home. That is gonna be the protocol we use district-wide. It's the one we use now for our ESY program where parents are asked, is there a cough, is there this, is that, so on and so forth, including temp. We're, we're basically trying to get students safely onto a bus using hand hangers, hand sanitizer, having them sit in their directed seat that they would sit in every single day because there'll be a sign.
What happens if a child has a cold or minor sickness? Will they not be able to attend school?
No, this, the C-19 response is around C-19. I guess because the, the general perspective of what happens between a cold and COVID-19 is a lot the same, we would probably say that if they have some of those, that you should probably seek medical attention sooner than later because of the idea of stopping anything from moving forward.
What is the protocol if there's a diagnosis of COVID in the building?
Yeah, the protocol is gonna be school nurse, principal, my office and the Norton Board of Health. And then it's my understanding from the, from the spring, that will also include the Massachusetts Public Health Office, Department, Department of Public Health. And then from there, our protocols of communication, what we can say, what we can't say will be provided to before school starts. But then the decision needs to be made between myself, the Board of Health and Mass Department of Public Health on, do we shut down a building and continue with the other buildings? Do we have enough information that says we have to shut everything because the students were playing soccer on the football field yesterday? And therefore, and it's, everything started today. Is it a 14-day, is it a 10-day? All of those are protocols that we're gonna have to follow. And most of that will come through the Board of Health supporting us and basically go into the Mass Department of Public Health for, I won't say it's a final decision, but at least a decision that supports what we're doing.
How can hybrid and remote learning be supported by daycare during this pandemic? As some students will have to be attending daycare on those alternating days if we go with a hybrid.
Well, one of the things that we're seriously looking at is, is hiring more full-time substitutes for day one. It's a decision that I, again, I have to figure out the funding source. I do think it's related to C-19. The problem is that the funding source is only there until December 30th, 2020. And I don't think it's fair or equitable for me to say to somebody, would you like to, I'd like to steal you from somewhere else to come work for me, but not tell them upfront that based on the funding, it's only here until December. I'm not sure I'm gonna get a lot of people who wanna be candidates for the job. We have reached out to our substitutes and asked them directly about, of the models, whether they feel comfortable. And we've gotten a very positive response from our substitutes in general. And I think one of the things we're gonna do is probably sooner than later put out for what I would call building-level substitutes, which are people that report every day to work and have a responsibility every day. I can always let them go later, but those, if I can find some good candidates, those should also be people that could really help us with remote learning.
Question about, questions about daycares and how daycares can help parents support remote learning or how is that gonna work? And I would say that, I don't know that we can answer that question. I think that would be a conversation with your daycare provider about how they would be able to support this or support children, because they're gonna have, it won't be just one, I'm sure. How will we accommodate incoming students if they're coming out of remote learning and into hybrid? Will we have empty seats for students to transition back in?
Yes.
Great. Which model does the majority of the Norton Teachers Union support?
I don't really know that in terms of, I know that they've taken some surveys and they've got some split views, but, you know, it's important to collect data and information, but, you know, it's, it's one piece of the information for us. I would guess, if I was a guessing man based on what's coming from the state level, that it's a full-on remote is where people are. But I also know that they have data that shows that the hybrid model is something that people are interested in as long as the protocols and procedures around safety have been met.
Will kindergarten be in-person as much as possible like the Little Lancers or will they be hybrid like the rest of elementary?
Again, I, I think that one of the things we have to look at is once we establish where we are and we move into it and we take a look and see and we use data and we use the issues that we're seeing, do we look at shifting some of our models around our students and their needs? And again, I'm going back to what I said earlier. I have some concerns about really young kids and also our older kids. Think about this, we have seniors going into the senior year, trying to figure out what they wanna do in life, still trying to build in transcripts, still trying to take classes that they believe will make them more competitive. And we have to try to provide ways to support those students. And again, I know that I'm using, you know, the two sides. The transition periods of kindergarten, fourth grade, sixth grade and ninth grade, I would say are significantly important because they're entering new buildings, they're coming together for the first time in fourth grade as a town, if you think of it that way. You've got the continuation of now classes in sixth grade, which is another big transition. And then you got, you're going into your high school and then you're leaving high school. Those are pretty significant time changes for students. And so I think we need to look at data and information and what data would we look at? Where are we having the issues? If Vinny Cersei calls me, because Ethan Dolan, the principal, called them and said, we're having some significant issues with kids not wanting to do X, then I think we have to look at Y, right, and try to figure it out. We can't just say, well, this is what we're doing for three months. This is what we're doing for the year. And the vote that I'll ask for from the school committee will be, let's look at this as a time period and be able to change if we need to. And I'll be doing the same thing with the Teachers Union depending on the final decision.
Okay, do we think, or have we considered sending the same group of students two days in a row? So for example, cohort A would come on Monday, Tuesday, remote day would be Wednesday, and then cohort B would be Thursday, Friday? Yes, we have looked at all different kinds of options. One of the things that led us to the every-other-day model was after a long conversation with Wade Lazzott, who was our director of facilities, we talked about that need for a deep cleaning day on Wednesday. And really what, and I don't wanna speak for Wade, but I'm going to for a second, Wade, sorry. We talked about the fact that that type of cleaning is going to take place every single night with his team of fantastic custodians. So would we really, a day in the middle of the week? Go ahead, Wade.
Yeah, again, on our cleaning protocol, we'll be hitting the high-touch areas between two, three, four times a day. But that deep clean with the electric static guns will be taking place every single night in every classroom. Bathrooms will be hit two, three times a day. We're gonna be moving, we're asking more of my guys than I've ever asked of them before. I mean, we have 19 guys that take care of five buildings, so we have, we have our hands full. We have the products and, and we'll do everything we can to keep everybody as safe as possible.
And by guys, we mean male and female custodians that we have in our district, which we're very proud of, by the way.
Correct.
And so once we knew from Wade that that wasn't really an issue, we looked at the importance of students connecting with their teacher on a more frequent basis. So we really liked the every-other-day model. So a student could be in with their first-grade teacher on Tuesday, then they would be set up for remote learning on Wednesday and be back in the classroom again on Thursday instead of having two days in a row and then you don't see your teacher for another six days. So that was why we went with this model. Do we intend to have teachers taking attendance and giving support to the students for remote learning by parent choice? I think we've answered that question. By parent choice, I think we've answered that question. It's still a work in progress. Why are we voting if it sounds like a hybrid is what it's going to be? It's responsibility of the school committee, right?
It's, it's school committees have a record of choosing the school calendar, negotiating when school starts if needs to in a contract. They've never had this vote in the history of the Commonwealth. And our job was to try to provide the options we were asked to provide. We started to look at one option being a very big concern, and that was the full, full coming back. So we started to look at this dynamic of data. So it's interesting. If I watch Fox News tonight and then I change to CNN, I'm going to get two different answers to the same scenario. That's what's happening in this country right now. That's what's happening with my office every day. Right? I'm getting bombarded with, this is what I think, and this is a story from this state and a story from that state. And look at what they did in this place. And Franklin just announced that they're going remote only, and so did another community. It was my comment early on where I said, why is this a zip code discussion? There should be a discussion that comes from the Commonwealth. If the, if the governor can close schools under a state of emergency, then instead of going through this political protocol of saying that, you know, this group of doctors say you should go back. This group of doctors say you shouldn't go back. And we've got five wonderful elected, non-paid people and a bunch of administrators who are being asked to do what we can based on the information that we have. And what we're doing in a near surrounding area right now, so that you know, we have Taunton going full remote for ten weeks and then thinking how they're going to go to hybrid and then come back. That's, that's how they came up with this, this situation. We have one other community that's trying to push K to five or K to eight, come back. But secondary be hybrid or remote, excuse me. We have one district that is trying to get kindergarteners in every day, but they're having a problem with where to put them in terms of trying to keep social distancing at six feet. We have some districts that are around us that are already announced it's a hybrid model. This is what we're doing. They're doing the Wednesday model that was just brought up. We have another district that is trying to figure out how to hire a facilitator for every classroom for the hybrid model during remote. And we've actually had a discussion with them, I've had a discussion with that superintendent about sharing staff. Let's say this, we have a situation where we have a third grade, we have a remote teacher and that other community has a bunch of third graders. Let's come to an agreement and say that my teacher is covering both of those. Right? And one remote teacher for two different systems. Oh, boy, that's a deep discussion we have to have with the teachers' unions on both sides and what that means. And then I'm sure we'll have a discussion about what does that mean for healthcare? You know, who's paying the healthcare portion of the salary? And it becomes more complicated. But my, my, my full storm here is, is we're doing what we think is going to be the best model for Norton Public Schools, recognizing that the model can change from one day to the other. And the unfortunate situation, in my opinion, and I'm not saying this because they're my bosses, because they know how I am with them and they are with me. I'm being truly honest to the public. They're trying to provide you with what they think is the best answer. And the very next day, there could be an announcement that we're doing something else. Because that's what happened. If you remember how we closed, Dinesh Savas and I were laughing the other day as he called me, sorry, Dinesh, I'm putting on the spot, but I know you don't mind. Dinesh Savas called me the other day, we were having the conversation. When I, I was recommending closing for two weeks back in March and Dinesh called and said, hey, about one week? And like twenty-four hours later, it became three weeks. Dinesh and I weren't even splitting our weeks. It was the governor and then it became six weeks and then became the year. I really think that's what's going to happen again. And so we're trying to utilize information and get us to take a look at all of the things that we think make Norton a special place, not only to work, but to provide a solid public education. And we could have full remote and people still getting COVID. And teachers still not being able to teach because they have it. So it's the best we can do.
If parents choose choice remote and want to get back into the schools, is it going to be difficult for placement? For example, if you have twins?
Well, I mean, I think any, it's going to depend, I think, on a couple of things. If, if, if I believe in developmental processes, it depends on the age of the child and what that's going to mean. I mean, if they're going into kindergarten for the first time, that may be very different coming from the remote into the hybrid than if, if they're an older student. Or it might actually, if an older student, it might be difficult as well because maybe they're concerned because maybe they live with a grandparent and they're really concerned about going home and so on. So again, I think it means something different, but I think we have to take a look at the significance of this, of the student and what's going on in their life, like we do every day, by the way, on all other issues besides something like, how do, how do we best support a student via a C nineteen situation?
Would we consider using remote days for high heat index as well as snow days to avoid extending the calendar?
Yeah, so right now, snow days or any emergency closure must be made up as part of getting to one seventy. We have no choice in that right now. Now, that could change. My recommendation on the school calendar, which will probably happen next week, is that the school calendar, keep open the potential that February vacation, April vacation are school days. And the school committee not make a decision on that until later. And we're just going to send it out to all staff and everybody else. I just don't see how we're going to be flying into Florida in February vacation and think that that's a good idea. I'm seeing that people aren't going to do it.
My child goes to the nurse every, for medical reasons, several times a day. How will this happen?
Say that again.
My child goes to the nurse for medical reasons several times a day. How will this happen?
That will still happen. We have medical documentation of a child who needs to see the nurse according to a very specific schedule. And I know some of those situations. We will still have those protocols. We've set up a separate area in each of the nurses' area for a response to a potential C nineteen, which will mandate parent pickup and request for medical documentation to return. But we were setting up those areas and then we would go into a cleaning protocol of that area, which might mean that we actually have to move nurses again in that situation. It's all going to depend on, on a, on a, the potential of what's taking place. But we have set up a, you go in here for C nine, for potential C nineteen versus you're over here to get your medication.
Um, okay. Construction around town, will that also impact?
Thank you for asking that question. I'm sorry to say that today I learned that and requested further information on the water project, the sewer project on one twenty-three, one forty there. There's some rumors going around, so before we start with rumors, let me get you some facts. I, I should get some facts sometime in the next five to ten days is what I've been told about the project. As you know, it's a pretty significant project. It's a positive project for the town, but we're, we're going to ask for, you know, that, that during certain times of the day, that that project needs to come to a stop in some way, shape or form. So we'll see. Originally, remember that during the school days, it was supposed to be in the evenings and there was an approval of that. Most of the blasting, I think, is going to be done in the next few weeks and one part of it. And they've actually extended it pretty quickly during, and, and other parts of it. So I'll get you some answers to that.
Do little lancers have the option of choosing remote?
Right now, as part of, of what we're trying to do is establish the little lancers and the sub-separates being remote one and then full. But we, we, that'll be definitely something we have to consider for families.
What is the class size for preschool and how are we going to do social distancing with those students?
It'll be fifty percent on average in general for all classes. When you're going to preschool, we traditionally keep those class sizes pretty small. And we may be able to actually open up other spaces depending on what other, other class sizes look like. Again, going back to the scenario where we have to recalculate classes and moves to create remote teachers thereby potentially creating spaces. That could happen too. But right now, I, I don't think we have any classes that are huge and some of our parents are not really sure if they're coming back. So Vinnie, I don't know if you have any numbers you can share.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're still looking to, to get some information, especially on our model, who's going to come in and who's not. So once we have that, we'll be able to see, to determine, you know, how we divide up those kids to, to maximize, you know, the staff that we have. To answer the other part of the question, it's going to be a challenge. You're going to have to do a lot of work with behavioral interventions, setting up classrooms, using, you know, we think about using things like yoga mats to sort of help teach this, the idea of, of social distance. We've done some work in our E S Y programs with a smaller cohort, but we've seen them respond pretty well. But it's, that will be a definite challenge at that level.
Will there be training so parents can help support their students with the remote learning tools?
Yes.
Answer that. All right, let's see. Is there a specific standard or minimum requirement for mask types? Not all masks are effective?
No, well, the, the fact is that Dusty's protocols are is that the mask that you've been wearing out in public should be fine. But we, like I said earlier, we do have masks available for both staff and for students. We are asking people to wear their own masks, but we do have them available.
Some families have expanded their bubble to, you know, two or three families. Is it possible to include them in the same cohort for transportation, et cetera?
We'll consider everything.
Yeah, um, okay. I, I don't know what MERV eight means. Wade, I think maybe this is you.
Those are the, yeah.
Some school systems are ensuring MERV thirteen filters. Given this is an airborne illness, this could make a huge difference as has been discussed.
So MERV thirteen is the hospital standards for the, for the pleated filters. We, we've been using MERV eight simply because most of our units are, are older. And the thickness, the density of the MERV eleven or MERV thirteen, our units would just burn out. They couldn't push it through them. They'd be sued, they'd be too thick to push it through. No filter stops the spread of the coronavirus. Fun fact.
Fun fact. Did mask guidelines change? Last I heard, it was for students in grades two and up.
We are making a recommendation that it be all students, all staff unless medically documented. It's, it's a perfect way to train students right away, starting in preschool in our schools. At least the people, the kids I see out and about are wearing them and these kids are going to be together. So we're recommending masks for all.
Great.
Can I interrupt you for one minute? Sorry, so I'm watching the clock a little bit. I'm also watching our participant sort of numbers dwindle. Not that I don't think these questions are important, but maybe if we could just kind of go through a few more, try to get the ones that we haven't specifically addressed. I'm not sure, Jen, I thought I could ask, is it possible that you have, you can sort of take this question and answer, answer these questions and upload it to our website for tomorrow?
We can do that. So we get a full download of the chat and all the Q and As. So we can certainly put together an F A Q document to be shared.
Yeah, but my, my, my intent was to answer some of the questions tonight. Create any of the questions that are on there into a Q and A with some specificity and then try to send that out by early afternoon tomorrow to the entire district again, so that people can see the questions that were asked.
Right, I think that there's so many questions. I also know we're meeting again tomorrow. I think that, you know, we can potentially, you know, I'm not suggesting we end right now. I think it will be, maybe if we can kind of go through a few more, but maybe also think about if there's a way that we can just take all of these questions, get together tomorrow, kind of complete the document, send it out and then have sort of maybe even some opportunity for new or additional questions tomorrow night as well. So maybe another fifteen or twenty minutes if people think that's appropriate.
Sure, and what, Carolyn, what we can do is we'll put them all together into an F A Q document. And then the same thing, include the link to a Google form if people have questions over and above those items that are in that document. Because I think that we keep hitting on a lot of the same questions. So hopefully, we can be a little bit more clear in terms of some of those things in that document.
And I think it's also important, we shared email addresses, we talked about, let's talk. If you have a question that we don't get to tonight and you really want that answer, you could certainly reach out to any one of us. And we will, even if we don't know the answer, we will find out the answer or direct your email to the appropriate person. So also feel free to do that. We just know that the majority of families who are on this call tonight are also going to be joining us tomorrow for another long call. And we just want to make sure that we, you know, have the opportunity to answer questions, but also give people the opportunity to have some breaks. So our team's been working on this for a long time and just trying to kind of get through so many questions. We can see that we still have sixty open questions. We just will not be able to get to all sixty tonight.
This is one question we haven't addressed yet. How often will we be reviewing the model to make sure that we are, you know, where we need to be?
So the, the initial outline for us is students in a hybrid model are going to see teachers X number of days within a cycle. So going, I think, a good three to four weeks and taking a look at what's happening is important to us. If we're in the remote model, then I think that would happen actually even quicker. So those will be ongoing discussions of what we need to do, just because the running of our school system will also be very different. I'll be able to have some administrative support, those types of things via our assistant principal's office, for example, in our buildings where we have that, and then central office supporting those schools that don't, so that we can get some further feedback and quicker.
One question just came through, it's actually a great one. How we ensure physical distancing for paraprofessionals and students that have a one-on-one?
Yeah. So COVID nineteen does not stop, C nineteen, as I like to call it. So coronavirus, COVID nineteen does not stop the carrying out of an I E P. So again, that would be proper P P Es according to what the adult specifically wants to have. We'll make sure that we're taking care of that. But also don't be, don't, don't think that teachers can't go into the student area within the classroom. They can. But specifically to a one-to-one situation, that may be that they, they choose to utilize more P P Es or we recommend or we require that they utilize more P P Es.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's a lot of similar questions that we've already addressed. The start date for the school year, I think that calendar will be brought to the school committee next week for their approval. Still a lot of questions about the fully remote model, a lot of questions about live instruction here. Question regarding sports and activities at the high school, when will that be made? And will it be independent of the instructional model?
Yeah, so we, we were on a call the other day that's probably caused some stress where literally a comment was that if you're not, if you're in remote learning, then activities and sports probably will not happen. I don't know if the powers that be have that authority. I guess if they've given you the authority to, to decide what model, I guess you would have the authority as a school committee to say, are we going to allow for it or not? So right now athletics are really up in the air and same thing with all kinds of activities. Music, physical education are also in there. There's some specifics on lab sciences. So we're waiting for the specifics on athletics and then we'll address it when it, when it comes back. I, you know, right now, Major League Sports is doing it. Some are having success, some are really struggling with it and some, I'm not really sure they're going to be able to do it. So I don't know how we, I don't know if we're doing fifty percent of this and that and everything else in the hybrid model or if we're doing remote, that athletics is going to be something that actually happens. But again, I think we would follow the recommendations and try our best.
Will teachers and students be required to be tested for COVID before the school year starts?
There's no current requirement to test teachers or students. However, I've made the Board of Health in Norton and the Department of Public Health aware that I'd be willing to go to the school committee to open up a building or two for the purposes of not only students and staff, but residents. But right now, they, that's not being recommended to do. We're hoping that something like that would come from the state level, but again, we're not seeing that.
When will we may have a final decision on what the year is going to look like?
The, the year will look like based on the vote tomorrow and then the calendar, which for some is important as well. And then what will happen is at the building level, there'll be the specificity of the actual schedules in terms of looking at students with special services, students who need certain classes. You know, at the high school level, it's very much a class-driven. You know, at the high school level, it's very much a class-driven transcript building schedule, if you will, for students, middle school is preparation, and then basically in teams. And then elementary is the typical elementary schedule. What we are trying not to do, and one of the commitments I've made to the committee is we're trying to teach all of the subjects and all the things that we do with kids just differently. We're not looking to cut staffing in terms of not having the arts and not having music. We might just have to come up with other ways of doing it. Maybe there'll be more music theory going on than there is actual playing instruments early on. I don't know, but those are the things that we're going to have to figure out for the schedules. I would say that a minimum of probably around two weeks before school starts. So I'd say right around before Labor Day, we're going to try to get schedules out. But we could be working right into the last minute with schedules, knowing that students start X. If we start on the 16th of September, for example, that's a Wednesday. The question we have to decide is do we do a remote day and then each group in once? Or do we just come live with the Wednesday, Friday group? We don't know that yet. We're going to have to figure that out as soon as decisions are made.
So I think that's probably a good place for us to, there's a lot of repetition in the questions here. I am more than happy to put together an FAQ tomorrow morning or even tonight and send it out to families tomorrow. Just to clarify, I think we are meeting again tomorrow night, Carolyn and...
Yes, we are meeting again tomorrow night. Can I ask, Joe or Jen, I'm not sure, there will be an email going out to families to ask for questions? Is that correct? Or am I?
Yep. We'll do that again as well.
So that email will be going out at some point tomorrow so that, again, we probably will not have the luxury of time to get through hundreds of questions. But we'll try our very best to kind of pull out the questions that maybe we haven't discussed tonight. We'll also try our very best to create sort of an FAQ sheet that we can kind of go upload onto our website. I think, Dr. Baeta, you had commented that if potentially there were sort of some similar questions, you could create a document that we could then send out, again, sort of something that isn't a question for an individual child or situation. Maybe we could even send out more information via email. So I think what we know is that we're all on sort of information overload. We've been kind of really trying to think about all of these questions and make sure that we answer them well. Everybody has questions that are absolutely great questions to ask, and we'll do our best to get more information out to everybody via some form of a document or again tomorrow night when we're together again at 6:30.
Yeah, the clarification, I think it just kind of came up. Clarification is that tomorrow night you have discussion and vote, or you're moving the vote to Thursday. And that'll be a discussion. The meeting dates are all been published. So really, it's going to be up to the five of you to decide what you want to do.
Any comments from the committee?
So two pieces of information. One will be getting out a Q and A form by probably early afternoon tomorrow. We'll just send it out to everybody, including the staff and school committee. Second, emailing everybody and saying, please email a question so that we can either put it into the Q and A or have it pre-prepared for tomorrow night. And then tomorrow night would be further discussion. We won't do the presentation per se, unless people really think we should. But I think it's more of a discussion about everything that we've been talking about. And then from there, either voting or schedule it for the Thursday because you folks want another night to think about it.
Hey, Joe, kind of a quick comment. I want to refer back to somebody's question earlier tonight where the implication, or at least my inference from it, was that we've already made a decision. Speaking strictly for myself, I have absolutely not made a decision on this yet. When we do vote, I'll make the decision based on what I think is best for the kids and ultimately some other factors. But in no way, shape, or form have I made a decision on this yet.
And I think I can also just sort of share. I think we've all kind of looked at this maybe through a different lens a little bit. Myself being on the sort of traditional back-to-school model, really recognizing the challenge with the expectations and sort of requirements from Desi and how we potentially may not be able to do that. I think, you know, there's been the sort of hybrid model that I know Sherri has given hours and hours to. Not only do they have their group, but they also had subcommittees within their groups. So those are just sort of examples that we really have sort of lived a lot of these plans. And we now have had the opportunity to kind of review them with your help and with the PowerPoint. So, you know, as Dinesh said, we really haven't made a final decision per se. I think, you know, we may have some ideas of where we think would be the best, you know, what would be the best interest of Norton and our students. But I think that this has been really helpful for us to sort of get some of these questions, to see kind of what parents are thinking. And then really kind of think it through a little bit and come up with a good plan either tomorrow or Thursday. So I can't thank our staff enough. I think that every time I have had a question, they have had multiple phone conversations with me. They've answered texts, they've answered emails. They have been on different Zoom calls with our state senators, with sort of our organizations that are helping guiding this process. We have all sort of been, I think, communicating on so many different levels, trying to really think about this. And I think that one of the most challenging things, especially, you know, again, I'll speak for myself, is kind of this level of fluidity that, you know, in one moment, we feel like we can maybe move forward with something. And then, you know, within a day or two days or three days, we get sort of different guidance or different sort of information. So it's been that kind of, for us even, a little bit of a roller coaster that we kind of feel like, oh, well, maybe, you know, on our back-to-school plan, maybe we could sort of go back to school. But then we go from three feet to six feet or those kinds of things. And that's been a really difficult juggling act because we have very specific guidelines that we have to consider and think about. We did not know, you know, a week ago that we were going to be giving 10 days away from sort of instructional learning, going from 180 days to 170 days. So I think that just sort of gives us another reason why our kind of plans right now are still drafts. You know, we can put some kind of markers in place of how we want something to happen and how we want it to look. But until we sort of have a definitive plan and we can really sort of work around that, we have to, you know, just consider this as examples and drafts. And I think that's part of where the struggle is as well, is that we are not necessarily sure that even by that September 16th date that we will not have more changes that come into play that really sort of do come from the governor down into Desi and then sort of directed into our public school system. So we appreciate everybody's patience. We know this is really hard. We all have our children in the district. We're looking at it through, you know, not only our lens of school committee members, but also our lenses of being parents. So our concerns are your concerns as well. And we also know one size doesn't fit all. So we really appreciate kind of the opportunity to brainstorm and to talk about. But we also know that parents are going to have individual needs, and we really are asking you to reach out to whomever you feel would be the supportive person, whether it's Dr. Baeta or Jen. If you, you know, Vinnie Circe, who really will help guide if your children are having struggles with sort of learning. So we're all available. That's important to know.
Madam Chair, you would need a motion to adjourn.
So a motion to adjourn the August 4th school committee meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So, Deanne?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes. And Kathleen is absent.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
I appreciate everybody's time. We'll see you tomorrow, same time, same place.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.